I'll order the Tuesday, October 21st meeting of the Long Island City Council and ask for a roll please.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Guthrie.
Here.
Counselor Coons.
Here.
Counselor Milligan.
Here.
Counselor Schaefer.
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Oberst.
All right, Ms. White, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I have tonight's consent calendar, which consists of minutes from the council meeting and work session from October 7th. I have a motion to approve those.
It's not moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded in favor.
Aye.
Post. We will adopt those. Real short, mayor's report, the Winnipeg server chase continues to be interesting and I will give you a fuller report at work session. Scott and Wayne and I chased around and around in circles on some things. Turns out that under Oregon law, ORS 192, Winnipeg isn't an entity. It doesn't really exist. So, Peggy is real interesting when you're trying to take along. We'll talk about that at work session and tell you what's up. And, that's all I have tonight, so I've turned to council reps, the boards and commissions, and Counselor Kent, the library board.
Thank you. As mayor, at the September, the October meeting of the library board, we got a copy of the annual state library statistical report, which is compiled every year by Monmouth Libraries required to submit to the state. And, we check, Monmouth Library users checked out 165,000 items last year, and that was up over 5,000 from the previous year. And, our collection is 128,000 items, so pretty good turnover rate. You can figure that the Twilight books get checked out multiple times, something doesn't get checked out at all very often. We have over 6,000 registered borrowers at the Monmouth Library. And, some other interesting things are, once again, we are a net lender, so the collection that we have is used more by people outside of our system who can get online and order the books and they'll be delivered to their library, than we have Monmouth Library users borrowing books from all those other systems.
So, another library far from us, is that part of 165,000?
Uh-huh. Yeah. Our numbers of children attending was down a little bit, but we had some great numbers of volunteers. We actually were up the number of volunteers and about the same number of volunteer hours that were being contributed. So, doing some really great work again at the library, and we had 101 children's programs throughout the year. Amazing. Those libraries closed a couple days a week, so. Anyway, that was one of the most exciting things. We also have the community pumpkin carving coming up and the Halloween activities that are being sponsored by Monmouth Business Association, so I want to ensure that people get a chance to not only take their carved pumpkins in on Halloween to the library for judging, but the folks go ahead and vote.
Very good. Anything else?
That is all for Longburg.
Counselor Milligan, I see you have two.
I do, and I don't have any reports because the historic commission did not meet this month, and the planning commission is having public hearings. I think it stays a little calm down.
And, we make the point of not having Steve attend when there's hearings so that he doesn't have any ex parte information that the rest of us don't have when things move up to us, so that's the reason for Steve not attending those. Very good, thanks Steve. Counselor Carey.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the tree advisory board met on October 9th, and sort of began planning for our next fall planting. You know, we had the large one that I think the mayor reported on earlier in the dog park. Well, there's, we're going to engage in a smaller one, November 15th, probably six to seven trees, and then some maintenance work in other areas. The target area right now is on Jackson, down near the, you know, west of Monmouth Avenue and sort of across from the Health and Wellness Center, there are the rec center. There's some open plant scripts, and it would be nice to fill it in. And, we'd like to select trees that would complement those that are across the street on the western campus, so that, that's good. The tree board will be here on the next meeting, November 4th, and they'll be sort of giving you, giving us our annual report. And, one of the things that, that we do, it's sort of a standard deal for the tree board, every meeting we have, whenever we talk about a tree planting, we'll thank Brian Sparks, because he's got a great arder and a great field.
Best appointment I ever made to any board commission, getting Brian's arder on the tree board.
We get, we get 47 trees in three hours and about 15 hours of Brian's time leading up to that, but I would've said that whether you were here or not, Brian.
He always does.
It's, yeah, it's well appreciated. But anyway, we meet again November 13th and put the finishing touches on that small little project we've got coming up in November.
Very good. Thanks, Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, mayor and council. We met right out, the day after our last meeting here.
And that was Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
October 10th. It was a quick meeting. We did have all but one member, and that one member we are short still, so if you would like to participate and become a volunteer for the Parks and Rec Board, we would love to have you. We did talk briefly about the dog park tree planting, over 80 volunteers was the total tally, which is fantastic. We talked briefly about the Generalwood Park mural. The, we're still in discussion with the art club at WU, so that's still postponed. And, of course, we talked briefly about Madrona Park Arboretum and Walking Trail, and Mark set a completion date, hopefully the end of October, but possibly the end of November. And, there is a ADA accessible, access to the walking perimeter trail, that was a concern, and so if you are concerned about that, ADA is accessible for the whole perimeter. And then we talked about Whitesell Park landscaping. Mr. Fancy is working with the senior and his senior project, and they're going to hopefully go over there and get some of the, I don't know what bushes are there, there's some kind of bush that Mr. Fancy.
Yucca plants.
Yucca plants, and he really wants to, he likes them, he said he's going to take them all. But, we're going to plant some trees and there that better fit that area, so. Next meeting will be November 12th.
Very good. Are there any community announcements to that? Okay. Mayor's report.
Yep. A few items, Madrona Park, they're installing trees right now, so we're getting to that point there. So, they're getting down to the last kind of elements, getting the trail figured out a little bit, getting seed, you know, laid down, getting those last couple trees ready, so. They're pretty, pretty in shape, so it'll be done pretty soon. Highway 99, here's to when our Russ Cooper went to a meeting there, Dave was very intrigued on a whole new project. One, they're, they're making it more complicated as they get into it, went from kind of just initial paving, now they're talking new curb ramps and all the safety things, looking at elements. And then a big one that they're doing, which goes right back to our discussion of urban dwell projects, is they actually want to revise the design there, so there is a planer strip down the entire way, so we would end up with a planer strip through our entire section that we talked about, so instead of a little cobbler or something, so what we're going to do is we're going to keep keen on that and then say, what do you mean by that? What would it look like? And then if we can help them design a little bit better, if we need to participate somehow, that might happen, but it's kind of like.
Is this a planter strip beside the highway, or?
Yeah, it'd be a standard curb, planer strip sidewalk.
Okay, because there was at one point discussion of a center dividing wall.
No. This is just in.
Okay, very good, just checking.
Yeah, pretty, pretty exciting though. I mean, that could give us a proper, really attractive planer strip all the way through the middle part of town, so.
So, from where to where roughly?
Um, it would be, I think at least, I think Madrona Church.
Wow. Both sides.
Right. Uh, five foot.
Wow.
Five foot. Yeah, we can work with that.
Could be way cool.
Yeah, so we're just going to keep track of the process, and we'll see, and then.
Okay. Russ, is there any consideration to the left turn lane southbound into Church Street? Is that still on the table or do you know?
It's early enough that I haven't seen drawings. It was, it was one of the things that we issued as a.
Okay, very good, just request. Thank you.
They have, they have other things that they're trying to put out there, so. Then, last one, a police station is being constructed upon, so that's a, had a grand opening, you guys didn't hurt yourself, that's good, thank you. Yeah, they're, they're, well, gangbusters not now, so that's good to have happen.
I was just relieved the chief didn't charge us with destroying public property for swinging the sledgehammers in there.
I was just glad that we have enough money that we didn't have to go finish the demo ourselves. It would still be going on.
Two. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, very good. Any citizen comments tonight? Okay. And with that, I will go on to the public hearing on updated transportation system development charge, which we've only been waiting on for what, a couple years I guess to get through this, I'm sorry. Three. It's been a long slow process, but I'm glad we got into that. And, I see we have a presentation on.
Yeah, members of the council, this is John Giller Ducci from the FCS group, and we've contracted with John to prepare the analysis and the methodology for the updated SDC. So, he's got a PowerPoint presentation.
And so, shall I open the hearing or the public presentation?
We can wait for the hearing until after the presentation, then if I see public comment after that.
All right, you want to open the hearing?
We can do that after the presentation, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Ray.
All right.
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 Thank you, Mark. Good evening, mayor and council. The way that we've set this up, I'll go through a little bit of background on system development charges, general background, and then get in and summarize the calculation and the proposed charges, how they would be applied. And then, of course, if, I've said questions at the end, I'm comfortable if you have questions as I'm going through this, please feel free, and I'll be happy to stop and clarify as So first, by way of background, we have Oregon system development charge law is codified in state statute there, ORS 223, 297 through 314. And, it lays out in that, in those sections, in my opinion, a really good law, at least comparatively compared to other laws in other states. It's real clear about what you can and can't do with SDCs, how you calculate them, what you have to consider in the calculation. So, we use that, we use that recipe to calculate the charges that I'll show you. Some things to keep in mind about system development charges, these are, these are the one-time fees paid at the time of development by new development, or in some cases redevelopment, if they're increasing their demands on the transportation system, impacts on the transportation system. So, they're one-time charges, existing development doesn't pay these, as I mentioned, unless they're redeveloping. System development charges, we calculate them best based on the cost of capital construction and capital costs, and the proceeds can only be used for capital. You can't use them for operations, except for one small exception. SDCs typically include both a future-looking component called the improvement fee, and a buy-in to existing infrastructure that has capacity in it, that's called the reimbursement fee. In the charges we'll look at tonight, we're looking only at an improvement fee, there is no buy-in to unused capacity in the existing system, no reimbursement fee. And then finally, SDCs are intended to represent a share of system capacity, so it's not about, if this were a water system, it's not about the meter or, or the line from your house to connect to the system, we're talking about a share of system improvements, major improvements. The math is pretty straightforward in calculating a system development charge. If we had a reimbursement fee, you would calculate it by quantifying the amount of unused capacity in the existing system, the cost or value of that capacity that's available for future users, you divide it by the growth that it's going to serve, and that gives you your reimbursement fee. For the improvement fee, again, the main point of tonight's discussion, it starts with a list of capital projects to be constructed, and you have to identify in that list, portion of each project which is adding capacity for future users. And then the sum total of all those growth-related project portions becomes your improvement fee on a cost basis. And again, you divide that by the growth that those projects will serve, and that gives you your improvement fee. So, the law says that an SDC can be either of those two fees or both together, so in this case, it will be the improvement fee alone.
John, I have a question on that, right here. Reading your material, it was noted there would be no reimbursement fee, I didn't know that, I didn't really see an explanation for why that was the case.
There's, there's a couple reasons. First of all, you need to have a, an indication that there is unused capacity in the existing street system that's available for future users. A lot of the projects that are on the planned project list are addressing existing needs, existing deficiencies, so there weren't, there weren't a lot of indications by that list or in the TSP, which was the basis of our original project list, that there's a lot of unused capacity in this system that's available for growth. So, that's one factor. The other factor is, we have, one of the things that we have to consider when we're calculating a reimbursement fee is how the facilities were paid for. And, in the case of street infrastructure, a lot of the existing streets have been paid for through general tax money, developer donations, but, but much of it is from general tax sources, could be property taxes or in some cases, gas taxes. Everybody's paying that, those tax, those general tax monies into that, into those pots. And so, it's not really fair to ask a new develop, a developer now to say, well, now you have to buy into this system that you essentially have already helped build through paying taxes. If there were a rate that had funded these, this infrastructure like you have in water or sewer, for example, then you have a real good basis for reimbursement fee because you have the rate payers who you are reimbursing. In this case, the folks you're reimbursing are everybody, and everybody's already paid in. So, that's the second reason.
If, if, if we, if there would have been capacity and if we would have, you had included the reimbursement fee, would that have then in some way reduced the improvement fee?
It would have, it would have been entirely additive.
Entirely additive.
Yeah.
So, another way to look at this is, is by not including that, this is keeping the cost down.
Believe it or not, yes, that's true.
Yeah, okay, that's, that was as I read it, but I wanted to make sure that was correct. Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, I did include here, just, I guess for reference, some of the key sections of the statute, and I've highlighted some of the reimbursement fee language, and really, the, just the noteworthy parts of this are, in my opinion, that we're trying to, going down to the bottom there, promote the objective of future system users contributing no more than an equitable share to the cost of existing facilities. Moving up then, we have to, you see that language in letter D about the value of unused capacity available to future users, and the cost of existing facilities has to be considered. And then above that, gifts or grants, prior contributions, that has been taken to mean that we deduct those, so if gift and grant-funded portions of your facilities' costs have to be taken out, so that's sort of part of my logic for ending up with no reimbursement fee basis in this case. There is likewise, similar language on the improvement fee. You see under 2A, A, it talks about the projected cost identified in the list adopted pursuant ORS 223309. That is just the list of planned capital projects, and I'll actually show you that in a minute. And then the portion of each that is required to serve the demands placed on the system by future users. So, even if we're increasing capacity, unless it's providing capacity for growth, we can't include it, but that's been taken into account and determined in charge. There's also language in the law that requires providing credits, and, and these credits apply in the case of a developer who actually builds a project off the project list as a condition of development. And then they oversize it, so it's, it's built bigger than their development needs. In a case like that, you have to give them a credit for that oversizing portion of the project up to the amount of the improvement fee that they, that they would have paid, so.
So, the development needs an eight inch sewer line, and we require a 12, we owe them for the added capacity of that 12 inch sewer line.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, your code already has language in it about credits, as it does about indexing the charges with inflation, which is another key feature that the law allows. These are the credit requirements, it, it basically gives you all that language that was shown on the previous slide, and then in the bold red here, it says, but that's not intended to stop you from doing more and issuing more credits if you want to. So, this has led to some pretty generous credit policies around the state, and that, those can get pretty complicated to your financial detriment at times, I think. So, anyway, that, that's the language supporting the credits. The law is also real clear about how you can use SDC revenues, and interestingly, the rules are different for the reimbursement fee than they are for the improvement fee. For the improvement fee, you can only spend the money on that growth-related portion of each project, so if it says 40% on the list is growth-related, the revenue can only go to that 40%. Were there a reimbursement fee in place, you don't have the restriction, you have to spend it on capital, but it doesn't have to be growth-related capital, so this won't be an issue for the transportation SDC, but it's something to keep in mind with your other SDCs, when you do have a reimbursement fee, you have more flexibility as to how you can spend that money. So, the existing transportation SDCs are summarized here. I've put a red line around the single-family charge, $402 per dwelling unit, and then all the other charges, you see those percentages, are essentially related to the trip generation by land use, for those different land uses. So, for example, for light industrial, $253 per thousand square feet of developed floor space is the charge, that's, that is the same unit charge as single-family residential, but their trip generation is different, that's why the, the actual SDC is different, if that makes sense. And you see some other ones there, general office, retail, commercial, obviously higher trip generation for the, for retail, so their charges per thousand square feet are higher. But again, these are the existing, the existing charges. So, in summarizing the calculation of the proposed charges and the proposed approach, that I will, I'll give you the, the results and the summary of the calculation here, and then show you some of the background information further on in the presentation. But if you look at the very top, there are capacity expanding CIP, about $8.7 million. That is the sum total of capacity increasing portions of projects from the list, which is about $55 million in total. So, as a fraction of that list, it's a pretty small amount that we're saying is adding capacity for future users. But that 8.7 million, and I'll, I'll show you the detail behind that in a minute, divided by forecasted growth in average daily person trips, which I'll explain in a minute, gives you an improvement fee of $221.18 per average daily person trip. You see where we have the model set up for reimbursement fee, had, had there been one to calculate, and if you move down to the bottom of the table there, you see where we're adding approximately $3 administrative cost recovery factor. The law allows you to recover the cost of administering and accounting for the SDC program, and also reimburse yourself for study costs like hours. And so, that's what we use to calculate that cost recovery factor, so that, that's the one exception in the way you can use SDC revenues to pay for something other than capital. You can reimburse yourself for the administrative costs associated with the program. So, that gives us a total of $224 per average daily person. And, that leads to a table, and this is just a summarized table, in the report, we provided oh, 60 to 70 different land uses and the resulting SDCs, but, and I'm sorry, these are tough to read, aren't they? The red line around single-family residential, single-family detached, I'll take you across the table. In the first gray column there, that is the ITE, the trip generation manual statistic for average daily trips, motor vehicle trips, 9.52. We then convert that to average daily person trips, and the reason we do that is because the project list has a number of non, it's multimodal, it has bike facilities, bike improvements, pedestrian improvements, more than just vehicle, motor vehicle improvements. So, this is our rationale for basing the charge on person trips, which are intended to represent all trips that people take, not just motor vehicles, but it includes bike and ped trips as well. So, we factor up the motor vehicle trip rate to account for person trips. In the case of retail land uses, we take out pass-by trips, so we're not going to charge the 7-Eleven that you stop at on the way home from work, we're taking out those pass-by trips. We're, we are reducing the trip generation for short trip lengths. And then we end up with an adjusted average daily person trip total, and then an SDC per unit in the seconds of the far right column, so. So, single family residential, the SDC per dwelling unit as a result of these calculations, $3,378 per dwelling unit. And then for some of these other land uses, apartments are the next one down, $2,359 per dwelling unit. We calculated the statistic for universities slash colleges, a little over $2,000 per thousand square feet of developed floor space. We were able to take a per student, a per student statistic and convert it to a statistic per thousand square feet. There are a couple of different retail land uses on this list. And because of the trip generation, some of those become substantial. I don't know if you want me to go through the whole list? Do you have those in front of you?
No, we've got them.
Okay, we can't read them, but we've got them.
When the lights go back on.
Now, and again, I can't read it, but I'm just trying to recall some reading this. The average trip, average daily trip, no, person trip.
Right.
Now, there was motor vehicle trip that was calculated and there was a, and there was a multiplier of 1.44 or something for more than one person in the vehicle.
That's correct?
Yes. And then there was also a 10% add for the bike ped piece.
Yes.
Isn't that double counting that?
Well, the, the 1.44 is intended to capture only person trips in vehicles.
In one vehicle.
In one vehicle. And then motor vehicle, yeah. And then the additional 10% is based on metro data. For every 10 vehicle trips, there is one bike or ped trip. So that's where the 10% came from to arrive at, at these numbers.
That's fair enough. But my question is, you got one vehicle transporting 1.44 people. That's impact, that's one vehicle impact. That's not 1.44, unless you want to count the weight. And that's probably not, in most cases, not going to be substantial enough to be concerned. So it seems to me, and again, I, you know, this is interesting and, and trying to get my arms around, teeth into it, but that's one that jumped out as just not making any sense to me. So help me out.
Well, philosophically, it's, it's, it's a different approach. I mean, what we are trying to, we are trying to get away from the motor vehicle focus of the, of the previous methodology because it makes it more difficult, we think, to have a nexus to the bike and ped and multimodal, other multimodal transportation improvements. So conceptually, the idea is to charge for every, every person traveling as opposed to, you know, whether it's in a car, more than one person in a car, a pedestrian or a bike traveler and...
So carpooling doesn't really help you?
So, well, it actually, it actually does because, you know, it ends up being converted back to a per dwelling unit charge anyway. What's essentially happening is we're starting with the motor vehicle trip ends, calculating average daily person trip ends, you see there at the 53,000. That's all from the 2008 data that was in the TSP. We bring it up to, I'll call it current 2013 when we started this update, and then we grow it to the end of the planning period, which is 2030. So all those numbers are bigger because we are trying to capture all person trips as opposed to just motor vehicle trips. And so our denominator is bigger and the resulting charge per person trip is lower. In the table though, which we were looking at a moment ago, we use those average daily person trips to develop the charges for each land use. So I guess the, the long story short is if you took them all out, these numbers would all be smaller. We calculate a higher trip, or a higher SDC per trip, but when we converted them back to land uses, we'd end up in basically the same place. Because we're taking the person trip approach, it opens the door to including these multimodal improvements.
Is it safe to say that in a way we're starting at the end with an answer, which is how much it's going to cost to do the improvements and trying to work backwards from there to figure out how many people are going to be using those improvements and, and what timeframe and spreading that cost out over the, the use they put into the system? So it's not so much that we're applying a number to dwelling units and coming up with an answer. We've got the answer. We have an estimate of what it's going to cost to do the work. And then we're working backwards from that. Is that a fair statement?
Essentially, I would call that working forwards, but that's because I make rates.
There you go.
Yeah. You're starting with the cost that you know you need to recover and, and this is all about the denominator, how we're spreading that cost over time and applying it to the growth that we expect.
To the layman, it looks like we're saying, well, here comes a house, we're going to say that it has this many trips and this many people per trip and, and so we get this magical cost figure and we come up with a number at the end, when in fact, the number at the end is used to work backwards to figure out what we need to charge per trip.
That's how we derive that cost for household.
Right. And in this case, we're now trying to capture not just motor vehicle trips, but also bike ped trips in part because we would like to encourage more bike ped. And so we're including bike ped projects into our list of potential projects. Therefore, if in fact we're building those projects, it would be a good idea to collect the cost of those projects.
As most public agencies are now doing. So you're not alone.
No, I understand. I just wanted to...
Most are now, are bringing in bike ped projects or have already done that. And the, the problem we were having, the disconnect sort of we were having is, you know, if you have a, a fully functioning sidewalk network with bike lanes, et cetera, it doesn't mean much to the capacity of your roads for motor vehicles. And so if we have a, an approach that's entirely based on motor vehicle trip generation and we have these multi, we have bike and ped, what, what's happening is it's hard to justify anything but a very, very tiny percentage of growth related project to a bike and ped project. If we look at the transportation system as a system of not only motor vehicles, but bike and ped, and we're, and we're trying to move toward a denominator based on all modes of travel, then, you know, then those projects become growth related, you know, a sidewalk project or bike project, it's part of the overall, all transportation system. And that's what we're trying to achieve.
Right. In the last five, 10 years, I've seen a marked increase in bike riding campus, for example. And I think that's because the planner at the university has found every overhang on campus and put a bike rack on it. So people have a place to park their bikes dry in the wintertime. And we've, we have really seen an increase in bike and pedestrian trips in university. And so we in fact have more bikes on our streets and roads and it's a good thing to plan to have capacity for them to be there.
So that, so, so that's what we're trying to get at with this, with this person trip approach. And what, what we've done is grow, is grow those trips proportionally with anticipated population growth for that same planning period because we don't have a better, a better way to base that, that growth in trips. So you see across the top there, forecast of population 2030 and then proportional growth of the trips. And if you look at the bottom right hand number in that table, 39,411, that was the denominator two slides ago in the actual calculation of, you know, the growth in average daily person trips. So, and I know you won't be able to read this, but this, this is the whole, this is the full project list and just so you know, in about the middle column of that are percentages. And those percentages are the identified amount of each project that is adding capacity for future users. In many cases, it's zero. If there's correcting an existing deficiency or if the project has already been completed, there's not, they can't be included in the improvement fee. The percentages bounce over and there, and you see in the comments, there are a rationale for each, for each percentage. And it's, and it's a pretty long list. So the, at, at the end, we've got a total cost for all those projects, as I mentioned, just shy of $55 million. The total of SDC or improvement fee eligible costs is that 8,716, 840. So a relatively small portion of the total list is attributable. So that's, that's just the...
That's what you do for them.
Yeah. Yeah, I like it.
Very good. Any questions for our brain trust? One of the ongoing concerns as we have reviewed SDCs has been how we compare to surrounding communities, although I'm not sure that that should really be a consideration, which what we're really looking at is what's it cost to improve our systems to serve our city. But given that we have worried about that, I ran through the, it's a fairly early page that compares Dallas Independence with Monmouth Current, Monmouth Proposed. And I would note that we will still have the lowest water sewer storm. We're comparable to Independence on parks and transportation, lower than Dallas on parks, higher on transportation. And our total is the lowest of the three cities at $2,700 for Dallas and $2,000 for Independence. This is for a single family dwelling. So as I said, it's not really, it shouldn't really matter because what we're trying to do is develop our systems and what it costs is what it costs. And our growth is what we predict it to be. So we're doing the best we can do. But looking at that table, it certainly suggests that we're not being horribly out of line. We'll still, we have been the lowest by a goodly margin and we will continue to be so.
Mr. Mayor, just to comment on that, I, I concur with both your comments in terms of, we need to build out our, you know, to meet our capacity, certainly. And, but it is nice if we can be competitive with those other surrounding areas. I would note that, that this, the chart you're referring to does refer to a single family dwelling. I mean, there's a whole lot of things. I have no idea where we are or not. And I don't want to, I don't want to get into, find out what Independence is charging for a...
Bowling alley.
Bowling alley or a hardware and paint store.
A drinking place.
A drinking place.
Which you notice is not a coffee shop. It does have to be alcohol, like beverages.
And it's a place too. That's everything.
It's a drinking place.
But anyway, I, I looked at that and I looked at that favorably frankly, but then I got, then as I went through the long list of, of other things, that they're necessarily there, then that, that lost a little certainty for me. But still, it's valuable.
I would add to that too, speaking with the city, two things. Talking to the city of Dallas staff, they're about to initiate looking at their TSP and their transportation projects and their SDC for transportation and their feeling is that theirs will bubble. So it will still be the lowest of the three cities, but it will go up sometime here in our future.
And that...
Well, it would go, yeah, it would go to 1100 or 1200, go to maybe 2,400. The other thing I would say too is I think the common terminology for the way we compare SDCs is, is a single family residence. It's the most common, I mean, these, SDCs are assessed at the time of the building permit. Those are the most building permits you issue, yeah.
That makes all the sense.
And mo, most of those, I can't speak for, for Independence or Dallas, not being real familiar with their structures, but most of the ones, they are trip generation based. So the impacts on commercial customers should be proportional to the ones you're seeing there for single family. I can't say that's the case in all cases, but most of the time that would be, if we can find.
And you didn't just pull these trips out of them or these are based on...
IT, I mean, the, the quote unquote bible for trip generation.
Okay. Okay. Steve, you have anything?
Nope.
Please.
So I just have a practical question. Since one of the projects here is underway on the, on our table four, which is Gwynne Street East Extension. And so that's, there actually is a whole new road going in. And so I'm kind of curious as to how that, just as a practical application, is, or is that, have credits, is that, I mean, how, just...
If it's done by the time we adopt a schedule, presumably...
Is the developer constructing it or is the city constructing it?
It's the developer constructing it.
Which one specifically is it, was the code on?
RE08C, Gwynne Street East Extension. I, I mean, I'm assuming this is that. I know we're extending Gwynne Street East. This, this may or may not be it.
Yeah, if it's one on the bottom there, it's actually coded at College de Whitman. It's actually a different segment.
No, this one is...
Gwynne Street East Extension, RE08C.
One million, 20%.
Being, could be constructed to improve connectivity, so this, this connects Town Mid Road with Yellowstone and parts west, so I assume that was it. And at a million bucks, it's kind of a major thing. But only 20% of it is SDC eligible.
So that's the part that they would be...
We would say we...
That would be creditable essentially. That's the paper sizing part that's, and then net of whatever of that additional capacity that development is consuming.
Right.
That would be creditable against their SDC. So you don't have to write them a check.
Right.
Basically, it's a paper credit, it's a paper credit that they were in. Yes.
Your, your point is that this is being built now, so does it fall into the improvement fee?
So that's two questions, is how does all this credit stuff apply, you know, so I can put theory to application? And the second is, yeah, when, when you take effect...
Timing, I'm not sure.
Already pushed through, if that's...
Have they already got, so they've already got their permit? Their building permit?
We've got a couple of different...
Nice follow on that previous...
Yeah.
I'm looking at the, the bottom of the table four.
CIP page seven, in the lower right hand corner.
Oh, yes. You're in the bottom of table four, on the last page of table four, yes, CIP.
Yeah, I think we're checking on that. We think it's probably a higher extension of Gwynne Street as the section's being worked on right now, including the whole section that will go up to Highway 99. So that's obviously where you get the dollar total. That little segment right there is not a million dollar project.
Yeah, well, right, because there's Gwynne Street West, there's...
Yeah, so it needs, it's a, it's a bigger project than just a little segment we're working on right now.
Any other questions, Steve, something, anything you're looking through this, does that work?
Oh, no, I'm just curious how this all works.
I've got a couple, I think. So since we have a new methodology for the university here, I was trying to get a handle on how that was working. So, and I didn't see anything particularly that, other than a reference to it on your PowerPoint. So as our student enrollment changes, does that change this formula at all? Or is this now what you would set in place going forward? I guess that's kind of the question and because we're working with some different numbers than, than we're currently at, of course, so it's already outdated a bit. So I was curious just to see what the take would be on that and how that leverages or So, I was curious just to see what the take would be on that and how that leverages or whether it does.
My, some of this, some of this, the city can decide. I'll give, my suggestion would be, what, what we did is we took, well, let's see, the problem with the ITE manual is the trip generation statistics for that land use code are all student-based. You probably know that, number of students. So, it's, it's impractical and it doesn't even relate to facilities being built if you base it on enrollment and you'd have to track it from year to year. So, what we did is we developed an equivalence based on current number of students and the current size, you know, and square footage of all campus facilities. And using the number of students per thousand square feet, then developed a statistic for, that would apply per thousand square feet instead of per student. So, you know, it's good for this snapshot in time. What I would suggest is that you simply index that charge, just like you do everything else from year to year, and every three to five years, you might want to look at recalculating that number. But unless you want to, it's not something you have to recalculate on an ongoing basis. The, the law is really unclear about how often you're supposed to redo your SDCs. It almost reads like it, it should be done on an ongoing basis. Nobody does that, you know, it's more like every, like I said, three, five, even longer years before you really look at the methodology. And that would be a methodology.
So, what, I mean, I guess, what's the hydraulics then? Say it's either direction, up a thousand or down a thousand students, what would that do to this formula? If it, if it was either direction, would it change it significantly, the way it's based right now? So, say it was, instead of sixty-one, it's fifty-one or seventy-one either direction. What would it do?
If, you know, the biggest thing would be if, let's say they added, you know, added a building or something, so that the square footage of campus facilities went up and then if enrollment dipped or something like, you know, so you had this sort of anomaly where both sides were moving, I mean, that, that would, that would definitely change the, change your answer. But it would take something like that to materially change it, you know, a dramatic decrease or increase in enrollment, the addition of some, some, you know, a significant building or two, and then that, then that thing would start to jump around. That would be a good time to, that would be a good time to recalculate when that, something like that happens.
So, the thing that comes to mind is that includes, that particular number for last fall includes all of our distance ed students. So, they never set foot on campus. So, that's a fairly high number from that standpoint. A fairly significant difference there would be in my mind. So, I don't know how that works into the matrix or if it does. Seems like it would have some impact. The ones that really aren't coming probably shouldn't be in the number, I wouldn't think.
When you say significant, Darren, do you know how many people?
Uh, it's probably eight hundred to a thousand. So, it's a fairly significant difference between the two. Yeah, I'd have to look at what, what it really is, but it's five thousand something versus six thousand something.
I, I'd have to look at the, the ITE manual. There, I believe that they are just talking about enrollment, so the, the enrollment numbers in the ITE manual would also include students who didn't, who are not on campus all the time. So-
Probably because when the ITE manual was written, that wasn't the thing.
Well, it could be. So, so that's why, that's why you gotta, you gotta just check it to make sure your definitions are consistent. They're surprisingly comprehensive, but yeah, if that's something that's not in there, that would be an adjustment to it, yeah.
At least from a trip standpoint, there wouldn't be nearly as many trips on those, virtually none for that groups.
Does some, does some of those students only distance learn or is it-
Yeah, that's, and that'd be the ones we're talking about, all of it. And I've got two sets of numbers, you know, we've got on-campus and we've got, and if they take even a single on-campus, they hit in that group, so, so they are differentiated in that sense.
Yeah, we can't get too granular about it, but there's, there's plenty of students who are only taking half of their course load on campus. In theory, they're making half as many trips, but-
Yeah.
Like I said, at that point, you start to split hairs.
Right, yeah.
I think that's, that's a good point. I want to come back. Thanks for the observation, Marshall. Nothing's perfect about these, but they can be. They're really, they're fairly scientific, but when you go down to even the changes over the years, I would probably do it like maybe every five years. If you look at a house, one, everybody pays the same. One house has one person living in it, one has a family of eight living in it, et cetera, et cetera. You have two restaurants that are charged saying one's more popular than the other, they're gonna pay the same SDC. So, yet never get to the point where you think that this is the exact correct charge for this university.
Sure. But you want to get the hydraulics pretty close.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that's a fairly high percent, you know, difference in the percentage, but not too. So, I think in that sense, it makes some sense.
So, is that an adjustment we can make at this point easily or?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I mean, where we're at tonight is a, is a public hearing, we're seeking a, a resolution and then we can resolve things for that, you know.
Anything else?
I think that's it for now.
Questions, Jesse?
I have a question to answer.
Okay. Question. You did? Okay. So, one last round for council, any other questions before I move on to public comment?
Only, you mentioned that Dallas and Independence were trip generation methodology. I reckon they were. What is the other? What's the other, what's the alternative to trip generation? Because it's fraught with, with, I mean, I, I, you know, we can call it scientific if we want, but, but if, there's a lot of speculation into it and it's the best we have and I'm okay with that. However, what's the alternative?
I, I honestly don't know a, a good alternative. You know, usually it comes down to average daily versus peak hour trips. But it's all trip generation based. Tigerd had a, well, that might have been their ongoing fee, transportation fee that was based on number of parking spaces. That's, that to me can be even more sort of random, you know, and, but there, I think their SDC is trip generation based at this point now, too. So, I don't know of a good, of a, of a good other option.
So, I, I just have, this is sort of a philosophical question. The mobile home industry has arranged through Oregon law and made it be that you can drop a mobile home into any single-family residential neighborhood anywhere in the state, and yet we treat mobile homes as if they're special because we're only charging them fifty percent on their, uh, single-family equivalence.
Yeah, I believe the ITE will define those as mobile homes in mobile home parks. Yeah. And a mobile home on, on a single-family, on a, a single lot will be a single-family residence.
Tends to be a single-wide to maybe a double and a triple. Okay, thank you. Just curious.
And the difference in trips generated by someone in a mobile home park and as opposed to another would be significant?
It, it, it would because the trips to and from include things like-
Wonderment.
Mail, you know, where there, but there's essentially one trip to the mobile home court, they're then distributing the mail that will go to everybody. They're, I mean, it's all based on, on-
Observation.
Survey research and, and, and-
Same presumption of high-density living that you get in a, in a public home.
You wrote first word, that's right.
Fair enough. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Any other quick comments from staff before I ask for public input? Anybody from the public wish to comment, it's comment, I saw your name on a sheet paper in the back.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, oh.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Oberst, members of the council. My name is Tom Neal. I'm the director of physical plant at Western Oregon University. I reside at four thirty-three Yellowstone here in Monmouth. We reviewed the information that's just been given to us by the city relative to updating the transportation system development charges as mentioned in the staff report. We acknowledge and agree with the following information that is contained within this report. The city has an obligation to provide capacity to serve growth for the transportation needs of its citizens, its citizenry, in fact, all of its infrastructure. And Western Oregon University does desire to have a new category for the university developments when it comes to SDC fees. In fact, we have been hoping to have this discussion with the city on SDCs for the university since the two thousand nine Ackerman Hall disagreement. We recognize the university as part of Monmouth community. As such, the activities on the campus have impact on the city's infrastructure. We'd like to seek a mutual agreeable methods by which future developments on the university property can be fairly and properly assessed with regards to the SDC fees. This should include applying appropriate credits for infrastructure items that the university has already paid for, indebted to the city, and any changes which result in reduced impacts on the infrastructure. That's one thing this does not include is any reduced impact on the infrastructure. The university's a separate beast here within the city. It works things totally differently than any other operation here. We've taken down buildings, we've changed operations, buildings, we've done a ton of different things. However, this time we must take exception to how the proposed rate for university college was determined in this report. The two thousand nine transportation SDC report prepared by Don Gaynor and paid for by the city was largely ignored. He discusses the impact of added new trips for the determination of SDCs. The city in its technical memorandum dated August twenty-first, two thousand fourteen states the city wishes to avoid linking SDCs to student enrollment and instead based the charges on physical expansion. For the past few years, enrollment has been planned. Our added impact on the city's infrastructure has been zero. This will not change with the addition of the new college of education. This new facility adds no new trips, no new faculty, no new students, no new staff, and yet it suggests the transportation fee would be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Rather than attempt to rectify this situation this time, we respectfully request the opportunity to discuss this matter further with appropriate members of the city staff. We'd like to include other components of the SDC fees in this discussion as well.
Real quick question on the head building. No new students, no new staff ever? So, you're building a new building with no intent to ever attract additional students?
Intent, right, well, hopefully we'll attract new students over the coming years, but it's, that's an unknown. The current plan for the use of the old building is as flex space where we can do major remodels and some of the other buildings on campus.
I understand that.
Which we've never had the room to be able to afford that luxury. We want to remodel entire buildings that take six months to a year to remodel and there's no place to put them. I can't shut down those operations for that timeframe.
No, you can't. You can't. I think, I think my concern, Tom, is that this is about a plan that runs through twenty-thirty and my expectation would be that that new head building would in fact increase enrollment if it doesn't.
I sure hope so.
Yeah. So, so that's what we're trying to look at.
I understand that, but we're paying large amounts now for a totally unknown, unasked guess. And it doesn't take into account anything that was subtracted. That place had forty-five units and twenty-seven thousand square feet before that was taken out of there.
Okay.
You know, and there's no credits for, for doing that.
Okay. Any questions, council, Tom?
Could you, Tom, you mentioned that the university was doing things to actually reduce the impact that it has on the citywide infrastructure. Could you give some examples of that?
We continue to look for energy savings, whether it's electrical, water, sewer, you name it, and we're trying to work with the city and the city's staff to reduce our, our overall usage, our overall carbon footprint. Thank you.
Anything else?
Appreciate it.
Anybody else have any? Here. Give us your name and city for the record, please. I will do that.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mike Erdman with the Home Builders Association of Marion and Polk Counties. Address is three eighty-five Taylor Street Northeast over in Salem. And we represent the residential construction industry, about seven hundred or so member companies that operate throughout Marion and Polk Counties. You may remember when the SDC proposal originally came out, I think it was three years ago, a little more than three years ago, we were very opposed to it on a couple of grounds. Number one, I think that the methodology that was done there had a lot of flaws. There were projects that very clearly were dealing with the existing community, not future growth, but growth was paying for it. In fact, I think, you know, in contrast to about nine million dollars in growth costs you have here, I think about fifty million dollars in growth costs in that earlier SDC proposal. We also commented at the time that with the state of the housing industry as bad as it was, we simply couldn't afford it. And so, we compliment the council on your action and you're not doing anything. So, here we are back tonight and I'm here to tell you that we're not in opposition to the SDC proposal that you have. We understand. Monmouth's got transportation needs. Our industry depends on having adequate infrastructure. And so, we know you got the need. I mean, we wish money grew on trees, we wish the state had money to, to give to the city to pay for all that. It's not the case and so, we don't like writing those checks necessarily, but we understand, we get it, so we're gonna have to do that. What we're asking for, though, tonight is that you, that you phase in the increase over a period of twenty-four months. And it gives us, our industry, the chance to absorb it, given the current conditions. And it's important because even though the housing market is recovering, the construction market's recovering, it's nowhere near healthy. And a good way to look at it is kind of some national benchmarks and there's a, a national index of MSAs around the country. And we look at the Salem MSA, it includes, you know, the Monmouth area, it's a pretty good equation. We're about thirty-five percent in the number of housing starts compared to what we expect in a normal market, you know, not the boom times of oh seven, you know, oh six, but a normal market, we're still at thirty-five percent. So, we're covering, but it's still pretty weak. Simple fact is, a three thousand dollar increase can't just be passed along. If, if the builder could just turn around and raise the price by three thousand dollars, frankly, they would have not fudged it out. If the market could absorb an extra three thousand dollars, they would have done it, but it, it can't. Prices are really dictated in large part by appraisals. And when a builder looks to sell a home and the appraiser comes out, the appraiser's gonna assign a value based on what past sales, what past homes have sold for. And just because the builder has an extra three thousand dollars in costs, doesn't mean he's gonna be able to pass that along. That may be the case if you're in the very rare situation of having an all-cash buyer and there's no appraiser that's been called in by the bank, but that's, those, those situations are few and far between. And the key is that three thousand dollars and what it represents. You know, you think, gosh, a house is selling for two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand, and you know, it's one percent, no big deal, that should be able to be passed along. But, but really, it's not the case. And I want to kind of walk you through that, not to bore you with numbers, but I think it's important in this case. The National Association of Home Builders does a pretty comprehensive industry study looking at what are costs of doing business. And one of those metrics they look at is, is what's the average net profit margin for a builder? And a very recent study came out, I think in the last few weeks, and said that right now, it's about four point nine percent net profit, better than it was a few years ago. I think, three years ago, I think the average net profit on a house was negative point three percent. So, for every home you sold, you're losing money, if you make up on volume, maybe, my theory.
How's that work?
Not too well, unfortunately, as a lot of folks are gonna test you and run out of business. But it's, it's about four point nine percent. And so, then you kind of create, well, what does that mean? So, when I look at the Valley Multiple Listing data and I said, you know, what's a new house sell for in this area? And we don't boil it down, you know, Monmouth specific, but the best way to look at it is maybe their numbers for, for Polk County, and that excludes West Salem. So, if you look at Polk County, the average new home sells for about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so, four point nine percent, that tells you that the average net profit on one of those homes is about eleven thousand dollars, okay? So, now you start to realize, oh, that three thousand dollar SDC increase represents more than a quarter of the net profit on that house. And so, it, it's a big number. And of course, as that profit margin gets squeezed, means that it's less attractive for that builder to make the start, less likely that it may happen. And so, we're coming to you and saying, we recognize that you need to do the SDC increase. We understand you got the, the cost of the infrastructure and we support that. And I guess what we're saying is, we understand Monmouth's got those needs, we just ask you to recognize that the industry's got some needs as well and given the, you know, it's recovering, but it's still pretty weak, phase it in. You could do, you know, a third of it here pretty soon, start of the year, do another third of it twelve months later, and the final third twelve months after that. And it gives us a chance to kind of catch up as the market recovers, prices start to increase a little bit, and I think it's something that we can certainly look at. So, happy to answer any questions.
Mike, have you, you probably come to these sorts of meetings, SDC-type meetings in a variety of communities. Are, are you comfortable with, I mean, is the whole trip generation methodology, is that pretty much what you see across the board?
You know, it, it's kind of immaterial because you start, you got a number you gotta pay for, okay? And you gotta divide it by future, so there's different ways of getting to it. So, I'm comfortable with the methodology.
Mayor, members of the council, my name's Eric Olson, I live 1520 Gwin Street in Monmouth, on that collector that was brought up earlier. I think just to confirm, a lot of things that Mike is talking about, kind of boots on the ground in terms of a $3,000 increase right off the get-go, it doesn't seem like a big number if you look at a, you know, $250,000, $250,000 house, but indeed it is, it does, it does make a difference. Really, the biggest part of it is, is, well, two parts. The first part is, right now, you know, in a normal, a normal housing market, you have a gap between what an existing house costs and what a new house costs. And that's, you know, ranges between 5% to 7%. And ever since the, the big housing, the big recession, when there was a huge fall in housing prices, that disparity between the two, you know, got as, got as high as 30%. So that's why new construction was such a difficult, difficult thing for builders like me, because people, you simply couldn't justify buying a new house when you could go and get an existing house at such a low rate. So while those, that, those sort of lines are sort of coming together, we're not there yet, and this sort of widens the gap even, even more, and I think kind of moves us in a direction that we're hoping, you know, in the next year or two, we will indeed sort of, those lines will begin to get back to around, you know, 5% to 7%, which makes it so that we can be at least competitive in, in, in the new construction side of, side of things. That's one thing, one part of it. The other part of it has to do with the appraisals, and that's a really, it's still, still a really big problem for builders. We've lost a number of build jobs, you know, in the last couple of years because the appraisals weren't able to, they didn't come in at a high enough number. So essentially, the appraisal company won't look at, for instance, they're not gonna look at your, the fact that we raised the SDCs here in town, they're simply gonna go look at existing houses and new houses that have sold in the last 12 months, and to be able to just suddenly have a $3,000 increase, it's simply not gonna be achievable in, in terms of satisfying the appraisals. So I think those two sort of reasons, as far as I'm concerned, make, make good justification to sort of phase it in, $1,000 a year. Also, maybe delay it until January 1. The reason January 1, you know, we have numbers out to people that are potentially, I mean, just purely selfishly, but we have numbers out to people that are potentially buyers. They're considering it, they're looking, getting financing, and to sort of suddenly sort of me have to send an email out and say, well, by the way, your house has just gone up by $3,000, that's a pretty tough sell, and, and puts us in a rather precarious position, either decide to eat it all or to, to pass that on to the buyer. So we would hope that indeed you, the transportation SDCs in Monmouth are competitive to Independence Monmouth, various other small communities, and so we aren't, we aren't, as we were last time, sort of contesting the methodology, but we are indeed hoping that you'll sort of look at phasing in the, the SDCs. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Any questions?
Just one. The appraisals, if they go, if, if they're fact, if they're considered, if they're conducted based on comparable sales, then once we get, you know, once a couple of these sales go through with the additional SDC, that should, shouldn't that, wouldn't that tick the appraisal up? Not that, the, the first one or the second one sold wouldn't, or appraised wouldn't, perhaps?
Yeah, in a small-
I'm not saying it very well, but it seems like you're gonna catch up there pretty quickly.
You don't catch up too quickly, because in appraisals, you know, you need to have enough sales of 1,000, maybe, maybe they'll, they'll group 1,000 to 1,200 square foot homes, 1,200 to 1,500 square foot homes. So basically, in order to do an appraisal for a 1,500 square foot home, they need five comps in a small town. Well, we don't have them. I mean, you know, it's hard enough for me to get comps right now for an existing house or a house that I'm building, because honestly, there aren't a lot of, there's not a lot of building going on. And so for that reason, I think it, it does take time for that sort of appraisal market to sort of recover.
Thank you. Eric, are you building exclusively in Monmouth right now?
Right now, yes.
I have a staff question. How is it gonna have to go to an existing home buyer to tell them that the price of their house went up, that this is based on when they get permits to build the house? So I'm confused in that how, how what we do is gonna affect the previous conversation we've had. But I have a question for staff, not you.
Eric might be able to help. And, and right now, obviously, if there's a permit, this is irrelevant. I can see it may be a slight window of time if you're talking to somebody, and then this goes into effect before we actually hold the trigger on, you know, a home contract or whatever.
What I heard Eric say, Steve was talking about people who are contracting to have a house built, but it has not yet been, that deal has not been signed, so he hasn't started anything, and wouldn't start until he had the signed contract again, for the price set for that house. Is that, is that a fair statement, Eric?
Yeah, exactly. You got it right, exactly right.
And it just, just in case, point in perspective, there's always say, we're only one of the minor inputs in the, in the cost of a house. And right now, as we saw in our police station, the sub went up really horribly. That, that could pop $3,000, building materials could pop $3,000, there's all sorts of inputs. And the fact is, anytime anybody raises a price, it has an effect.
Anybody down here?
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. We're seeing none, I will close the hearing and ask counsel to discuss. Anybody have anything we'd like to?
What's the last conversation we had with the university, with the city, excuse me, had with the university about SDCs? When did that happen?
Could you rephrase that?
When is the last conversation that the city had with the university about SDCs? When did that happen?
This year?
Sometimes.
Yeah.
So maybe rephrase that slightly, but I think you meant methodology, is that what you meant? Or did you mean just based on projects?
No, no, no. I, I mean, have, have we had a discussion based on, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, remember, I'm gonna need that. This has been going on for a couple of years, we've been looking at increasing SDC charges, correct? Okay. I'm assuming that at some point during that process, the, the key players, we may have bent their ear a little bit, and gotten their insights of what the impact of increasing SDCs beyond the development they're doing within the city. When was the last time we did that with the university?
Well, I think the key thing here is that we, we went to the university for the base numbers, and we told them how we're gonna approach the unit, and then, then, yes, then they got the methodology, but we haven't had like a separate discussion on all the details of that.
And, and certainly, I'm not, I'm not questioning the process at this point, I'm trying to get a sense of what's been done, because my follow-up to, to that would be, certainly today, we've heard from a lot of people speaking publicly now, just purpose of having a public hearing. Has, has something similar been done with the Home Builders Association? Have, do we go to them at the, during the, this planning process at any point and seek their, okay. So it's, it's not like, it's not like we've been shutting the university out.
No, we've basically been doing our work, and then, and then actually, whether we like it or not, we actually would anyhow, but per state law, then you have a list of notifications, those goes out, and everybody gets a chance to take a look at it.
Okay.
Just like any kind of public hearing, if we were doing a land use, well, you've got land use things coming tonight, anybody can comment on that.
You're saying this document itself is not a negotiated document? Right. We sent, we sent this document to everyone who testified tonight in August when it was issued.
Okay, so I guess what I'm, I'm trying to, maybe what I'm, not what I'm trying to inquire about, but what I'm trying to assert is that, at this point, we've been following a process that hasn't shut out one particular person from the process over another person. We, we, we proceeded as a municipality, we're now having this public discussion, and at this point moving forward then, there are ample opportunities to start involving folks who have various opinions on whether we should be increasing the SDCs and how we should be doing that starting tonight. Okay. So it, so it seems like going forward for the folks that spoke tonight, there should be open doors and conversations happening. That would be my perspective.
Well, that's, what we would be doing tonight is passing a resolution to either adopt these as presented or change them somehow. So not private conversation, this is now up to us to decide.
Scott's recommendation is that we bring, that you direct us to bring you back a resolution, I'll hit your next meeting. And you can shape that by giving direction to staff.
We can give them direction to them.
Based on testimonies.
To change it. Looking to something specific, there was, you know, different ideas thrown out, some things we could look into. A couple ones, interesting one, if I just did some quick math, and if we, when you, when you play two numbers, actually, if you, if you deleted the distance learning students out, you actually increase your fee, because then you got less students dividing into the space, so it actually makes the per space charge go up. So if you did that iteration, it would actually go up. I think in one, two, is that the, Tom mentioned, you know, credit for facilities that are away, that's been taken care of, because we use the current square footage on campus to give this number. I did another piece of math, and if, if would have, I would, I used 1,500 rather than 1,378, and that would also have increased the fee. So those things have been taken care of. A couple items that he noted are things that would just, are not part of an SDC calculation, energy efficiency, different things. Like similar to a house, we don't go to one person who has a better furnace.
Insulation.
And then we insulation, and we give them a different credit. So those are things that are really offline.
Well, that has been done in other communities, we don't do it. Yeah, I've heard about that.
Call it a point for them.
Well, energy credits for, energy credit, energy credits for roads.
That's been pretty rare. And I think the other thing where you typically get it, if like, say, the, well, if the university did a road widening, then yeah, then when it came around, that could be credited toward, you know, something, but those aren't types of things that are being done.
So when you look at universities, and we're looking at square foot versus student count, where, where does that fall? I mean, where do the engineers come down on the best approach to a university and someone?
Yes, could be.
Yeah, sorry.
If I could come back up.
Yeah, if you would.
Well, the idea for this approach came from a transportation engineer. So-
So a transportation engineer came up with square foot instead of student count?
Well, I posed the problem to him, and this is not, this is not a new issue, but, you know, the specter of charging SDCs when enrollment increases from year to year is just not something that anybody wants to, wants to deal with, and the same things are happening with other universities, physical spaces being added. Arguable in those cases, whether trips are being added, but in most cases, they, they are, and the idea is, as you were describing, to get it when the facility's been added, knowing that that is providing capacity for an increase in enrollment over time, you take the, the charge at that time instead of with the enrollment increases over, over time. So, yeah, so the, the engineer we talked to thought it was a very strong approach for an SDC in which you're trying to get that one-time charge, that one-time fee, and not base it on, on enrollment.
Okay. Anybody, while, while we've got him here, anybody else want to throw anything else about?
So the only question I had on that is, did you run the numbers both ways to find out which is most cost effective for the-
To administer?
Or, or just, I mean, if you're gonna use two different methodologies, you would wanna see what each, each one came out to, to find out. If you went by one, which you thought was currently in process, which would be this enrollment, and it took you to, let's, let's just say, 'cause I have a chart here in front of me, that my guess is we use that methodology when Ackerman Hall was built, which had a With the new methodology and square footage, that would have been 184,372. Would enrollment have been somewhere between there? You know, I mean, or would enrollment have been less than the 62,000? I mean, where did it fall so that we could say, is there a way that we can hold our costs for ourselves as a city but be reasonable with the university?
Okay, so mark where I'm at.
Yeah, so on, on Ackerman Hall is your, is your example, Ackerman Hall was a 300-bed facility, and so that would translate to a, a 300-student population. The, the ITE, and when you run through our numbers, it's a $650 per student, which would be 195,000 using a, a population number, using the ratio that, that reviewed, you come out with 184. So they're, they're very similar, but the methodology that we're proposing is less in that, in that.
Actually derives the, the lower number.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's what I wanted to know. So we actually do have a lower methodology to benefit the university, albeit not much, but-
Actually, interesting one, I think if you up your percentages, the Ackerman, we're projecting a building like that would have been 194% increase. If we coded multifamily, which it was last time, there's a 780% increase in here. So I think you can, you can see from that upper block and the lower block, this new methodology, not that it's an intent, it is, is a huge benefit to the university, I think it's reflecting that finally, that, that there's a sort of a shuffling on campus that not just 'cause you do something necessarily equates to, you know, more capacity. So I think we've got that reflected, and, and obviously, the numbers are pretty striking.
Okay. That's why, I mean, I was just trying to figure out-
Given that this is a different approach.
With a different approach, with a university, how increases-
Are we making sure we're not choosing the one that hurts the most?
The person most, correct. We're actually the one that benefits.
I'm close.
Right. And that's, that's why I wanna, so I can make the intelligent decision on it. I mean-
I do have one question related to that. So is that based on 300 beds, was the 62? Because we also took 100 beds offline at that time, and I think it was only based on 200 beds. So again, 'cause we tore down 100 beds at that time and replaced with 300 new, so the net was 200.
I think we were trying to appear if it really was a 300-minute building or something.
I see, okay.
Yeah, we weren't dealing with all the deletions and everything there.
One, if I may, one, one advantage for the university in tying it back to those per student trip generation statistics, you know, we converted everything from those to a per thousand square foot, is that, you know, those statistics for universities include lots of internal trips, so the trip generation per student is really low. So when you convert that to a per thousand square foot, that low trip generation rate is still embedded in, in those numbers, and like Scott was pointing out, if you compare that to a standalone land use like multifamily or any other type of specific land use on the campus, you're gonna get a much higher charge using that than you will the approach we've taken here tied back to the per student statistics.
So for example, athletic club, which one of the university facilities is similar to, an athletic club is 68 PPT, and the university itself, 2.71. So if they had just built an off-campus athletic facility, would be-
Under the new system, it would have been-
Humongous, I mean.
Right. Considerably more than.
One of the questions that I had is, we're going through this, and I've sort of had my nose in this, I've missed some of the conversation going around, but are we counting students more than once, sir? We're talking about, we're talking about their impact at Ackerman Hall, the example using right now.
John, I'll, I'll say, no, the, the numbers are raw number, students in the square footage, this is just an example, if you get there. So they're two completely different sequences.
I asked Scott this earlier, but just for clarification, let's take my house as an example. I'm, I'm wondering what, what, what the impact is when you remove capacity. If I take my house, single-family dwelling, take it down to the ground, put a new house up in its place, there's no SDC assessed, correct? Because the capacity's the same. So for the university, this case where we take 100, the university takes 100 beds offline, builds 300 beds with a net of two, the SDC, given this alternate format, would have been based on 200.
If that's, happened at the same time, and that, and actually, that depends on your local policy.
Got it.
But yeah, in most cases, yeah, you'd only charge them for the incremental increase.
Since we're using the square footage in this proposal, if a building is knocked down within a certain timeframe, then a new building goes up, is there a similar adjustment?
Does not have to be, but in most cases, that is what would, that is what would occur.
And that's practically, operationally, how we-
Since we're using the square footage in this proposal, if the building is knocked down within a certain timeframe, then a new building goes up, is there a similar adjustment?
Does not have to be, but in most cases, that is what would, that is what would occur.
Yeah. And that's practically, operationally, how we would operate.
And that's one that we talked about, that's an interesting one, you get little windows on time with, it's still a blunt instrument, remember that. So if, if, um, if like nothing happened in five years and we used a five-year figure, then that, that deletion would be added in now. If, if we were waiting till five years and in year two, and you delete some buildings, then it wouldn't be credited anymore. Cause we would, we would have to refresh the number yet at that point. I think the whole idea is at any given time, you're kind of a little sway back and forth here and there.
Another example to that is oftentimes we'll have a single-family residence get converted into a duplex. And at the time that SDCs are assessed to that, there's a credit for the single-family residential, but then apply to, to multifamily units. So it's the, it's a slight, uh, uh, increase in, in the SDC.
I got you.
But you give credit for the previous use.
And, and that would continue under this model at this point? That helps a bunch, I think, in the thought process.
At the university, when the multifamily housing that they, they currently have, would the same enrollment, um, methodology be used for the multifamily housing as it would be for any other large building on campus?
If it's on part of campus.
Yeah. It doesn't matter?
Yes, that's, that's the big difference is right now, we try to figure out what it is. Is it multifamily, is it an office, is it a recreation building? We go to the right code and try to match it up. This, this point is any building, or frankly, a shed would be just coded to that same number. So we wouldn't have to worry about that anymore.
I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around why we're doing this specifically Western. I understand the bigger picture of Western Oregon, big, big prod, or big business over there. But I'm, I'm still having a hard time why, because there can be incidents where it's going to be in their favor. Seems like substantially.
Well, yeah, the, the whole new model is substantially in the data for Western. I think what happened is it's, it's been grossed, we listened. And so we, we went to professionals and said, is there a way, does this make sense that there's a little, it's different? I think John indicated that in his presentation. They are just a little different how they operate with the campus environment. And like you said, there's examples where you take a, a building and you might need to add this just because everything's too congested. And so it's really not adding capacity per se. You're not dropping in a twenty-one department and twenty more families. And so I think we, we did that. We think this is a fair methodology and approach.
So Jesse, a little piece of history, one of the things we ran into with Ackerman, the original SDC charges total, all categories was over nine hundred thousand dollars. And but by the time it was all said and done, it got down to under four hundred as I recall. And it really brought to the fore, uh, the university considered that building one category on our SDCs. And we considered it something else and that's where we got sideways with each other.
Yeah.
And so this is an attempt to do away with trying to figure out what that thing is. Because for example, Ackerman has classroom space, it has office space, it has bedrooms. So what is it? How do you code that thing? Well, let's just code it by square foot instead of trying to figure out what it is.
However, I, I just find it hard to, to understand that if I was to open a restaurant downtown or open a restaurant on campus, it's going to be substantially less than SDCs for people to start business.
Could be.
For the existing, yeah, so I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around why we have a separate system, but I get what you're saying. I understand that part of the.
So this is a totally off the subject, but just have to ask about elementary school. It's a per student unit, a square footage. So with something like that, if, if we're building something like that, would that be based on capacity of the school or current enroll, projected enroll?
So it'd be. Well, usually it's done based on capacity. It's a little, it's a little bit of an awkward fit. You could develop a square footage approach for those as well. They haven't proven to be an issue within the community, so, so we left it.
So.
You can tell where we're at.
Yeah.
If, if I take my house and I bump out the back, I hang a bedroom on there, do I get SDC charges assessed for expanding my single-family dwelling?
Only store and water.
If, if you, if you add a kitchen or a bathroom, you're sure to have.
Okay. Comes a multi.
Well, yes, sewer and water, but not trans.
Okay. The, the reason why I ask that is I see some of the ways that the university expands that might be square footage in a similar fashion. You're working with the same number of students, same number of people living in the house, but yours giving them a little more space.
So I made a note to myself earlier that says, no methodology is perfect. And no time is right to do this. Nobody wants to pay more for building a building. But at some point, we've already waited three years on this, folks. Because it was not the right time and it was too much, so we waited.
If we go from four hundred to five hundred, maybe better.
Right, and how, how many transportation SDC dollars have we foregone in the last three years with a number of multifamily projects that have come through this community? Because we have held off doing what needs to be done for the future. And that's the big thing, is we're talking future here, we're talking twenty thirty in the big picture of this. So that's, that's my perspective, is we've got, at some point, we have to do something. I understand the concerns around, uh, the timing. So Lane, if we were to ask for a resolution next meeting, it would go into effect.
You tell me.
Okay, so it would be possible to make that be January one if we wanted to. And if there was an interest on council on a phased, uh, impact here of, uh, that would be an approach that we could choose to do. But at some point, folks, we got to do this. We've got to have a, a fund being built to build the roads in this community. We're hurting for fixing roads because of the way this country is choosing to not fund transportation infrastructure from the federal level down. We've got to take charge of our own fate here and start dealing with this stuff at some point, because nobody else is. Yes.
Couple of points on it, just, just perspective with the, just the apartments we had and everything, we, we probably lost about nine hundred thousand dollars in SDCs at that time. So I think in one way to look at it, we've essentially, when the economy's bad, a lot of cities did discounts or deferrals on their SDCs. We functionally did it.
Right.
We did that. There's been basically an SDC holiday for, for three years.
Wow.
As far as that goes, and as far as the, your couple of options you hit on one, um, we could just delay this a little bit, you know, and, and we'd prefer you just implement it. Really, that's where staff is in this, but if I could delay it, if you did even just a couple of months, that does get that window of time issue if you're working on a contract. Another smaller way to walk it in would just be to do an increase half now and then half a year from now or half six months from now, whatever, something to let it sort then a little bit.
And that's, that's why I asked that question, because that's what I had.
It's your choice.
That's why envision is a possibility.
I, I.
And I'm not loud about the idea, but it's a possibility.
Go ahead, Steve.
See, well, that's why I wanted to bring the tier system up is I didn't take your own notes, I don't know if you're talking about a two or a three tier. I, I would go for a two tier. I mean, having been a small business owner, I hated price increases. You know, I mean, it was like, dang, it's like somebody's used to a price and I'll send the price one up. So I know how the builders are, are impacted by it, but at the same time, we really have had a holiday on, on our transportation SDCs. So at this point, I would say do a two tier. That we, that we do the first tier in January when we implement this and then six months later, we go to the full, the full amount. That way, if they've got people that they're talking to, they can, you know.
How, how do you work a fifty percent on this? How do you work half of an increase from where we are to where we're headed?
Yeah, the resolution would just adopt the methodology, but implement it to a fifty percent level. The recommended, recommended methodology has a January one and full implementation on July one. It's just a matter of words, I think.
How's council feel about that? That's kind of a, a beginnings of a motion, I think, Steve, but not quite there.
I, I would.
Start to pull some pieces together.
You know, I, I, I'm on side with Steve's concept. I would probably, yeah, I, I would say implement phase one in January of, of fifteen and phase two, January of sixteen. We have, um, we will accumulate, I mean, the, the projects that we have to do, while they're going to be creeping in price somewhat, are going to still be there. I think that we'll still get funding for the, of debt and, and to your point, you know, we may quote unquote lose a little money along the way.
Fail to capture.
Well, I mean, it just, you know, it's, I mean, I, I, I think that in, in retrospect, it was wise that we held off three years ago, given the, the situation we were in and given how it is, you know, and this is a small part of it, but it's going to let us come back. So I think that there's a lot of, of, of value in, in the phased approach. But I would, I, I would take it out to, in effect, fifteen months, what it boils down to. I mean, that phase one in fifteen and phase two in sixteen.
So you see, what do you think?
Um, I'm, I'm, I, I prefer John to Steve's, but I, I'm okay with the two tiers. I'm okay with waiting till January and I'm okay with this methodology in general. You know, I, I'd love to have seen more conversation. I don't, if, I don't know how much was and I can't judge that, but if this, to know, you know, Mr. Neil indicated, he has been hoping to have this conversation for three years. So I don't know who that is incumbent upon to start those conversations or to keep them going throughout three years or what they look like or heard like, uh, sounded like, but I sure hope that especially now that we're trying to figure this out, we're seeing that we are being really considerate of flexibility in these issues. We see that there's some space to look at these things differently. I hope that, here it infuses future conversations. Is there one comment to add?
Two things, I guess. One is I, I would be okay with either. I think I prefer John's methodology at this point in time as well. Thanks for the conversation related to how the formula worked and stuff. That helped me at least understand it a whole lot better. But I appreciate that secondly, so.
I had a question about the tiered system, would it be across the board? Would you have January one fifteen and then fill it up with what we're seeing right now proposed? And I, and I think the, the year out is my preferred choice. Six months would be fine. I just think a year would be a better way to go. Oh, I would second Steve's comments about the conversations. It seems like that we're, seem to be catching up with this and same with the building permits. We had to make a big jump on that. So in the future, hopefully we can have these conversations a little sooner so we can avoid having to jump these large increases, but.
Yeah, I mean, Jesse, this has been sitting here for almost twenty years now since the last increase.
You noticed that, yeah, ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
So with the utmost respect and deference for the work that's been done up to this point, you've all done a fantastic job, but I wouldn't, I, I personally wouldn't take any action tonight. I would rather wait until the next council meeting. You've heard a proposal from the home builders. I'd like to give them, they've heard the discussion, they've given a public comment. I would like to give them the opportunity to present their opinions on the proposals that Steve and John have put forward. I'd like to give the university an opportunity to come back and speak one more time with a formal proposal. I appreciate that the university's not a hundred percent happy with the way things have gone. Let's, let's hear your solution. Give us a solution next meeting and let's take it all under advisement and let's take action next meeting. That would be my position.
Okay, so.
So, so I, I moved it.
Could you, could you back up just a moment? Just a, just a moment. The, the interesting one with the, with the phasing is that the, there's a window, you know, the, the houses that are being built, we, we will lose some money. The really interesting one that's, that's a pretty big factor in there is the, the university's education building. Just depending on how you pick, we might be getting a fifty percent or a hundred, depending on what the timing is on that building. So that's a, that's a big variable. Just to keep in mind that this isn't just a, oh, it's no really big deal, it's just a house here and there. There's, there's a big building coming.
And that, and that emphasizes the difference. I know that it's difficult to wrap our heads around with these various industries and we aren't talking about industry's work. But it's a big difference between putting up a couple of houses every year versus putting up one every five years, but it's twenty times the size of my house.
So. So is there any kind of way that you could show us a cost analysis of what you're expecting housing to be?
Like how, how.
In the next year? I mean, the university has a plan where they're going to do the building, so it's not like they're just going to go, one week, oh, we're going to build another, you know, one point five million dollar building next week and surprise us. I mean.
Unless you're cutting the check.
They know that's, that's in the, in the pipeline now. The home builders are, it's a little bit different, but they do know that they've got some people that they're talking to.
Okay, we, we could just do a simple listen on that, though. That's, the, the bigger one has a bigger dollar impact is, is depending where you drop the line and where the, where the university's education building.
Well, that's, that's my concern and, and it might be that what we need to do is if we're going to tier it, tier it one for residential, maybe look at how we can be more effective with the university, I mean.
That'd be really challenging. Now you're, now you're kind of negotiating with one user. Yeah. I mean, it's really, it's really, it's one or nothing.
Need to do it across the board.
Across the board, yeah.
Um, Steve, before you make a motion, I'd just like to throw in that the big thing I heard from home builders was contracts under discussion right now. And I don't think that probably there are very many of those that are going to be stretched out over six months. And that's why I would support your original motion.
How did I have a look?
For a six-month stagger on these rather than a full year. I think it's important that we just, I mean, we've already waited three years. Why are we waiting another year? Let's get this thing done and in place for the future of this community. We can't drag this thing out forever. Let's get it done. And that's, you know, that's where I come down. So I'll step back at this point.
Well, John, it will be done.
Yeah, I.
It will be done when, when we get done with it. It's just a matter of when the whole thing.
And I won't add on two weeks.
Will not come back and do it again. Well, arguably, but we won't come back to that. But so it, it, it will be done, it's just a matter of.
Oh, no. That's where I say, let's get it done and just.
I, I guess a point of perspective, we have not phased any other SDCs, nor have we ever phased in a rate increase. But I mean, if we start going down this path, every time we try to make an adjustment, we're breaking it into pieces and stretching things out. You know, if, if you do it in January one, I think that would deal with the window issue, the really, the talking to customers issue at the home builders, which is very legitimate. And that would take care of that one. We would assume things went into effect.
I agree with you, Scott, but the, the rate increase on electric that wasn't phased in was percentage wise, much smaller than what we're talking about today.
The other thing I would say that's good about this process, once we've got this completed, I believe we have a inflationary standard dibble.
You do.
But somewhat.
You do.
Uh, in place, so we could have this.
I confirm, Mark, that won't be changed with the, with actions.
So Steve, you want to go ahead and throw something out?
Sure. I moved it to council, direct staff to prepare an adopting resolution for the updated Monmouth Transportation System Development Charge as is presented in the report.
Okay, motion on the floor. Comment or amendment?
Second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you, I forgot that part.
Thank you.
So for purposes of discussion, second, any comment or otherwise?
Well, I'll be a no on this because I, I'm, I'm a proponent of the phased approach.
Would you amend rather than no?
Well, that would require a, a.
You move to amend the motion and that'd be a separate motion to vote on.
Right.
I will, I'm, I guess we'll have, oh, well, it, it might be easier just to say how it goes, but, but I'll go and throw it out there based on my parliamentary.
I got your back.
Try to get some big dollars. I, I would move that we amend the motion to read that, that I direct staff for an adopting resolution for the updated Monmouth Transportation SDC, fifty percent to be phased in on January of nineteen, uh, two thousand fifteen, the remaining fifty percent to be phased in January one of two thousand sixteen.
I'm going to second that one, too.
Moved, amended, moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to the amendment?
No, let's just.
Sorry, I had to go there.
Let's deal with it, because once, once, once you deal with this amendment, the original amendment will still be on the table and you can offer another amendment.
There is an amendment on the floor moving and seconded and can I do a, do I need a roll call here or?
Oh, you know, you might, because I'm expecting you probably have a split vote on this, because you can, you, it is a debatable motion. So you can have discussion on the amendment.
Right, so, so the, the, the motion is amended as to direct staff to send us a resolution that will have a fifty percent of these SDCs effective on January one of fifteen, fifty percent effective January one. fifteen, fifty percent effective January one of sixteen. That's the amendment. In fact, Phyllis, if you could give me a roll call on that amendment, vote for that amendment?
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Coons?
Aye.
Counselor Milligan?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
No.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Do I get a vote on this?
You do. This is fine for you, John.
Yeah, it is. This is like a really unusual one, because this part of me says no, because I wanna go six months, but part of me says yes, because I think a phase in is a good idea. I think moving this thing forward is a good idea. So with that, I'm gonna vote in favor of the, the two-year phase in.
So now you have an amended, now you have an amended motion, so you're still need to vote on the, on the motion itself.
Right, so I would now turn to the, Steve's motion to direct staff to prepare this resolution and attach to that is the amendment to have a two-year phase in or a January one, I don't wanna say two-year, a January one of fifteen, January one of sixteen, phase in fifty percent each, each January. So, Phyllis?
Hey. Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Coons?
Aye.
Counselor Milligan?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
No.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Twice in one night, this is like really, really unusual.
And you might get a chance to rehearse again next to me.
Right, so.
You have a resolution.
Well, I, I think I've had one vote in eight years, so maybe two. So with that, I'm gonna, I really do think we need to get this done. It's tempting again to say no and see if we can do it in two six-month takes, but I'll take an increase of fifty percent January one and fifty percent in January one after that. I'll vote in favor and say yes. So if you all agree on this resolution, then we can hash this out one more time before such a thing gets actually adopted this evening that it does.
So again, this is just a motion to prepare the resolution. It's not pay action.
Does, does anybody need a quick break before we move into the agenda? We've been at this for two hours.
Every quarter wants breaks.
Okay, real quick, five-minute break, and then we'll get back to the agenda. I'm ordered, but I'm tying things officially back into order. I'm out of order, but the rest of you guys are. So, I'm turning now to item two on the business agenda. Public hearing on legislative amendment fourteen zero three, amendments to the comp plan and zoning map, and I'll open the hearing. Ask Mr. Mark to give us a staff report.
Okay, members of the council, legislative amendment fourteen dash oh three are amendments to the Monmouth zoning map and comprehensive plan map for a number of properties that are located on the western Oregon university campus that are incorrectly designated and zoned. The properties that we're speaking of are those properties at the, the north end of the Monmouth Avenue portion of the university. That includes the entrance sign at the northern boundary of the university. It includes the Oregon Police Academy Building and adjacent parking lot, and then it also includes the, the area that's a vacant property with a circular drive that will be the home of the new education building. This was originally, came to my attention when the architect for the, for the education building called me and asked, when do we, you know, how do we go about getting our conditional use permit? Because the properties are currently zoned as high-density residential and designated as such in the comprehensive, in the comprehensive plan map. So the proposal is to change the comprehensive plan map designation from high-density residential to public and change the zoning to public service college. Included in the staff report are staff's findings regarding the criteria from sections ninety point three two five and ninety point three three oh of the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance. I will, in the interest of time, kinda go lightly through that, just noting that the, the area in total totals approximately seven point seven eight acres. All the other properties on the campus, on the campus prop or outside of the, the parking lot located at Warren and Jackson Street downtown, everything else is designated on campus as public on the comprehensive plan map and as public service college for zoning purposes. So the intent here is to rezone these areas so that they are, and redesignate them in the comp plan map so they are consistent with the rest of the properties on campus. We've also noted that while the proposal would remove about three and a half acres of vacant or redevelopable land, high-density residential land, that the university over the last few years has developed a number of acres of student housing and has approximately eight up more acres designated in their twenty twenty master plan for student housing. And I think after sitting in on the, the master plan review that went on a couple of years ago, it's the intent of the master plan to get those core buildings near the core and get, and create buildings such as housing and parking and athletic facilities at the further, say, western extremities of the campus. The idea being that they don't want students to wind up being late for classes because they've gotta walk a long distance to the west. So the location of the future education building near the library, near the Police Academy is within that, kinda that core area on the campus. So with that, I'm gonna conclude this staff presentation, and if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. The recommendation here is to adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adopt legislative amendment fourteen dash oh three. The Planning Commission conducted their public hearing on this on October first, and they've recommended that you adopt. And if you choose, if you vote to adopt this evening, then we will prepare an ordinance for our first reading at your November fourth meeting. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions to counsel.
Questions?
I just had an observation, counsel. I was going through this, my, my question was answered here, which is that the multifamily housing you mentioned that they have put in is an allowed use for, as long as it's dwellings for faculty, staff and students, that is a permitted use in the public service college zone, so that's how they've been developing those, so.
Right, right. And then by redesignating this land, that the, the education building is a permitted use as well. So that will negate them, the university, having to apply for a conditional use permit to adopt that.
And this, because I know our residential land inventory we've been talking about, so this isn't gonna be enough of an impact to that, that we're going to have to go scare up some other.
Right, and, and I believe it's probably included in the existing two thousand and one inventory that was adopted. Any, any of the draft numbers that I've given you for billable lands, I have not, I have not counted these, that land with a circular drive as developable.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Public comment? Hearing none, that will close the hearing and ask for a discussion and or a motion.
I'll move that the council accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adopt legislative amendment fourteen dash zero three.
Second?
Moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On to item three, a resolution authorizing a street dedication.
Yeah, members of the council, this is the, we're working with the, the former power and light substation property that is at the end of, or at Echols Street and Broad Street. As I think we discussed with you previously, you can see from the map that's attached to your staff report, portions of the legal description of that property, which we were trying to get to so that the, the council could just decide how to dispose of it. Portions of the legal description extended all the way into the right of way into both Broad and Echols Street. So what we were able to do was have a survey or prepare amended, or descriptions of those areas to dedicate them for right-of-way purposes and also a small sliver of land that's intended to make Gwynne Street, Gwynne Street right-of-way meet standards at sixty feet.
Okay. And so theoretically, one of these days, Gwynne Street is gonna not taper to zero, will in fact punch through at the west end. Very good. Okay. Any other questions for staff on this? Hearing none, this would be resolution seventeen eighty-three.
I move that council adopt resolution number seventeen eighty-three.
You'd read that title.
A resol.
Resolution approving and accepting a dedication of right-of-way.
Certain real property.
Of certain real property lying within Broad Street South, Gwynne Street East and Echols Street South for public use.
That's it?
Good. Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And so again, this is resolution seventeen eighty-three.
Counselor Milligan?
Aye.
Counselor Coons?
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
And dedicate that right-of-way. Next, we're on to an ordinance adopting LA fourteen oh two. And I will just beat Mark to the punch here and say that this is an ordinance adopting legislative amendment fourteen oh two, the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance.
Mark? This is the second reading of the ordinance that would add the minor amendments to the zoning and development ordinance related to the keeping and maintaining of chickens.
So I have read by title, and this would be ordinance number thirteen forty-nine.
I move the second reading and adoption of the ordinance enacting legislative amendment fourteen oh two, and then the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance. I, I'm gonna just slightly reread that. I move the second reading and adoption of ordinance thirteen.
Sorry. Forty-nine.
Thirteen forty-nine, enacting legislative amendment fourteen oh two, amending the Monmouth zoning and development.
Very good. Moved? Moved and seconded? And Phyllis says this is an ordinance?
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Milligan?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Coons?
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer?
Aye.
And that will let my chickens free, at least into the backyard. And now on to an adoption of an ordinance implementing a marijuana tax. And by title, this would be an ordinance establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the city of Monmouth. Lane or Scott or anything to add?
Same, oh, yeah. Same ordinance, the key elements is you have a five percent on medical marijuana, ten percent on medical, and the key thing is, this is a.
Ten on recreational.
I'm sorry. So this is a basic position of if, one, you have to have the state measure go through, and then there's gonna be some discussions about whether this is valid and how it goes through, and the key thing is that we have flexibility. So when this is just going into effect, we've done our job. If a couple of those things play out and it looks like this might be in the realm, we can have discussions about rates when to implement and follow through at that level. So, but this puts us in the right place.
It is a place order.
Okay. This would be ordinance thirteen fifty. Are there any questions from the council for staff on this?
This does not have an implementation date attached to it. We know that it, when it gets passed.
Well, well.
It, it becomes effective on adoption.
Yeah, this, this is, this is a normal ordinance.
Yeah, right, right.
So it's there, so then what would happen is it would be in place, and then for some reason, it comes around to January or whenever, you go, I think I wanna change something, then we would actually alter this. But this, this is the base document essentially.
Yeah. So, so one of the questions is, I've had some conversations on the campaign trail with the proponents of this. They said there's already a twenty percent give back to the, to the cities written into, written into the language.
Well, yeah, the way, the way the measure works, there is revenue sharing, just like there is for, for liquor. I'm not exact on this, but I may be pretty close. For, I think for the first two years of the measure, revenue sharing is, is based on population. After the first two years, I think it's based on the number of facilities that you have in the cities. So I, I'm not sure the twenty percent is, is an accurate or fixed number, but there is an element of revenue sharing of state revenue from the tax.
And this is only on recreation?
This is on the recreation of marijuana.
And this would be twenty percent of whatever the state takes, not twenty percent of the resale price.
Right, right. But again, all those numbers, yeah, that, those numbers are all, I shouldn't say those numbers are in flux, those numbers are fixed, but what they translate into remains to be determined.
And after, and after the two-year period or whatever it is, your revenue could go to zero.
Yes, right. And it would, if this measure go to zero, if you don't have any facilities, you're taken.
But if you have a facility.
Right.
Portland has five hundred, then you're really getting this much.
That's right.
And this will protect the revenues.
You, from that, if you have that facility, yeah.
So again, this is.
We currently do not have a tax on any other medical supplement.
You don't have a sales tax on any product.
Correct, nothing. So I move approval of ordinance thirteen fifty, adopting a tax on marijuana and marijuana-infused products.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Phyllis?
Counselor Coons?
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer?
Aye.
Counselor Milligan?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we'll adopt our ordinance. And in a trifecta, we have another public hearing tonight. I don't think we've ever had three public hearings. We got one more.
Yeah.
And this would be for legislative amendment fourteen oh one, amendments to the zoning and transportation systems plan and plan code.
Okay. Members of the council, I'm gonna walk you through the amendments. Some of them I'll be pretty brief on. So if, if you know from my staff report, the, the descriptions of the amendments are in the same order that you find them in the amendment package itself. Section ninety point two one oh would no longer require the applicants provide a map for notification. Staff generates that map pretty quickly now with the GIS program. Ninety point two four, stop me at any point if you have any questions. Ninety point two four five, we've got a little glitch that it says planning commission decisions are fifteen days to appeal. State law says twelve days, so we're changing consistently state law. Ninety point two five five, this is for site plan review applications. These are applications that are not a conditional use permit, not a commercial building, typically something like an apartment complex would be site design review. It's a ministerial decision. It's, the review and decision is issued by a, a committee comprised of myself, the public works director, and a member of, of the planning commission. It's basically a zoning compliance review. Are there adequate setbacks? Yes, no. Are there adequate, is there adequate parking? Yes, no. Those types of things. Right now, the, the code states that the committee needs to meet within ten days and make a decision once an application is submitted. Well, the problem is that we're also required to send notice to the neighbors and give them a fourteen-day comment period, so there's just no way we can do that. So this, this would extend from twenty days, the maximum time period during which the site plan review committee shall meet and review that application, just till it works. Ninety five point oh seven oh, and there's a little typo in my staff report, but it's ninety five oh seven oh. This was something that we, we still caught something in the recodification process. You remember we came to you last year with a whole bunch of minor changes that the codification company had caught? Well, they, we caught a couple others, and this is one of them related to the zoning ordinance. So it just clarifies the process for the floodplain map interpretations and appeals. The next set of amendments relate to planned unit developments. Planned unit developments are a type of subdivision where depending upon the jurisdiction's code, there are certain allowances made, there may be certain requirements made. So in our code, I believe we give exemptions to such things as setbacks, but we do require open space, or that if there is open space, that it be owned by a homeowner's association, for example, not dedicated as a public park. And so what these amendments do is, and is that they allow for an applicant, a developer of a planned unit development, that's something that, that applicant would have to seek as opposed to a regular subdivision. It allows a density exception to be granted if certain sustainable development techniques are used within the development, everything else being equal. That is, that the development provides adequate open space, roads and everything else. But there's a number of, it's on now page four of the actual amendments, active and passive solar use, covenants ensuring maintenance of future solar access, use of wind turbines, Covenants ensuring maintenance of future solar access, use of wind turbines, community greenhouses, gardens or orchards, water conserving landscaping, stormwater harvesting, enhanced tree plantings and use of green roofs. This is a discretionary part, so this, of the planning commission review of a PUD. So what would happen would be that a PUD applicant would say, here's our subdivision, and we're proposing the following out of that list of things I just read. The planning commission would determine at their discretion if those provisions were enough to grant a little extra density. So there's kind of a trade-off there. And in the table, in the staff report on page two, it shows what a twenty percent density exception results in. There's one more unit for low-density residential per acre, two more units for mixed density, two more for medium density, and four more for a high-density PUD. There's kind of a trade-off there. Also, the amendments require, and some codes require a minimum of open space that be provided within PUDs. One of the hallmarks of PUDs is that there's some kind of community open space within the subdivision. Our code currently does not provide any type of minimum for that. So what's proposed is a minimum of five percent of the gross per acreage for PUDs be designated as usual usable open space. One of the problems sometimes with a PUD is you wind up getting the, from the ground, is the open space. Here's the floodplain, that's going to be our open space, we can't build it anyway, we'll make it open space. What this says is that only a certain amount of that can be that unusable land, in that a lot of it has to be available and to be used for active recreation purposes. So what we did was, we looked at a property in particular that could be developed in the future, and we, you know, on the ground, kind of mapped it out and said, here's what ten percent looks like, here's what five percent looks like, we even looked at twenty percent. Five percent was something that the planning commission felt very comfortable with as requiring. And I would note that with Edward's Edition PUD, if the, if the urban farm area were to ever be included within the PUD, they would be at five percent. So that's kind of an example here locally of what five percent of the development looks like. To the Main Street District, there's a number of changes proposed, and I will walk you through those. First of all, we're changing the district description to include the property that is the Carriage House in Monmaire's Bed and Breakfast. That was rezoned in two thousand nine, so there's a little bit, this is a zone that actually has a physical description provided. One of the changes would be to add the phrase for accessory dwellings, that those are accessory dwellings used in conjunction with a permitted commercial activity. And we're doing that in lieu of, or by taking away, home occupations. Home occupations are something that are really intended to be used within a residential zone. A home occupation requires no outside employees, very limited signage, no retail sales, no more than one customer per hour. So it's a very, it's the kind of thing where you see a tax preparer, a music teacher, in a quiet neighborhood with a one-foot by two-foot sign only that says, we're running a business here, but we live at home and we do the business here. It really doesn't fit in a district like the Main Street District where we don't want to restrict your commercial activities like that. We don't want to tell you you can't have outside employees.
Want you to have less traffic.
Yeah, right, exactly. We don't want to limit, you know, we won't limit you to one customer per hour. So the trade-off there is that what we would allow, because I did get asked a question by someone who owns property downtown. I'm thinking about, I have a building, and I'd like to develop a dwelling inside of it and retire and run a business. So I want to live there and run a business, and I didn't really see a way to get them there from here. By adding accessory dwellings used in conjunction with a permitted commercial activity, it provides that living and working space as a permitted use. And it gets rid of something that would never get used anyway, no one would ever apply for a home occupation permit because it's too restrictive in that zone. And I would note that we, as required by law, whenever you take away a use from a zone, we're required to send special notice, something called Measure fifty-six. And we provided a copy of the notice, I think, with your staff report. So that notice was sent to every property owner in the Main Street District. It's very well scripted in state statute, exactly what the notice is to say, and it's somewhat alarming that we're about to limit the uses of your property, and it may impact your property values. So needless to say, I got lots of phone calls, and I was able to assuage everyone that, you know, this is really to your benefit. I think I only had one person that called me up that was angry when they called, and I calmed them down by the time we got done.
And that was my question, so about how many people do you think this could affect or would have affected or?
Well, everybody that owns property downtown, I mean, the Main Street District is that physical location, so I can't remember.
The bank wasn't going to be worried about it.
Right, but I sent notice to everyone that was in that zone, so everybody got, it was, yeah, so it was basically people that, I own a house, you make them, take them a house away, what are you doing? And I tried to explain to them, no, if you want to open your business in your house right now, you're limited to a home occupation, and we don't want to limit you like that, like I just described. We want you to be able to have a business and flourish and live there at the same time.
So this is from the middle of Jackson Street to the middle of High Street, basically? Right.
No, the Main Street District.
No, it's, it's from Jackson to Clay.
I mean, Clay.
From Monmouth to ninety-nine, yeah.
Yeah, right, sorry, Clay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That whole downtown, yeah, the whole downtown core, that includes a lot of residences as well. So right now, the only way to have a business in your residence is to have a home occupation. And that's, again, it's a kind of a silly set of restrictions to place on someone who's downtown. So that's why, that's, those are kind of a trade-off there of a more compatible use and with a use that's really not ever going to get applied, being, going away. Other changes to the Main Street District include... So we dealt with some of our public uses as well, and so what we looked at were, as permitted uses now, public recreational facilities, as well as libraries and senior community centers. Those are moving from conditional uses to permitted uses. The idea being that we would not have to apply for a conditional use to put in a Main Street Park amphitheater, or a conditional use to expand the senior center, that those are permitted uses. The one thing, the one limitation we, and then I think we've also added galleries, right? Galleries and museums to permitted uses. If you look on page seven of the amendments, some of the deletions that were made, currently galleries and museums and small-scale assembly or convention facilities are a conditional use. Conditional uses are uses that are, may not fit quite in the zone, they may have some impacts, traffic impacts, noise impacts, odd hours. And galleries and museums don't generate those kind of impacts. They don't, they don't have the, you know, they attract people, but not, not on a constant basis such that they should have to go through a thorough review, like a conditional use permit, as opposed to saying, come get a building permit, or if you're in an existing building, go ahead and set up a museum or gallery. Now what we did limit was that, and it currently limits, it says, small-scale seating capacity up to five hundred assembly or convention facilities and theaters. We reduced that to three hundred seating capacity. Five hundred is nearly, Rice Auditorium is six hundred seats. So what we're saying is, if you're half the size of Rice, yeah, we probably should review that and make sure that doesn't have impacts that... And it doesn't mean you're going to necessarily deny a conditional use permit, but you may put conditions on it, as the name implies, such to make it compatible with the other uses in the zone. The next set of amendments deal with fences. So right now, there's a little bit of a confusion with the way our fence standards are written. And basically, in simplest terms, side and rear yard fences can be six foot high in solid wood. Front yard fences either need to be three and a half feet high if they're solid, or up to five feet high if they're fifty percent open, chain link wrought iron. The idea being that we don't wind up with six-foot-high walled compounds. I think of that one house in Independence, it's right on the corner. There's the walled compound. So, but the idea is that for your side yard fences, the first fifteen feet, that front yard setback, those fences need to be low as well. So you don't come right out six, six feet high right to the sidewalk. But that within that required front yard setback, they also have to stay low, and then once you get to that point, they can step up to six feet and disappear into the rear yard, which is, well, you do that for privacy. So those are the proposed amendments to the fence standards.
And it's from the sidewalk, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So you can't go three-foot wall for three-foot fence, huh?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we measure it at grade, so yeah. The stacking doesn't work, yeah, I've been asked that question before, yeah. If I put a five-foot fence on a three-foot retaining wall, how'd that work? No. And then, and then the next set of amendments deal with annexation. We recently had an annexation application and realized that the, it requires signage to be posted on the property, but it didn't say when that was supposed to take place. And so I think we've amended it to... Well, at least, at least thirty days prior to the annexation election is when you put it up. All we have currently is you need to put a sign up, but it didn't say when it had to be up, so we kind of had to guess the last time we had an annexation. The next set of amendments deal with...
I've got one question.
Oh, yeah.
This is just dealing with election signs, but yard signs seem to be pretty prevalent right now. Does this work with all yard signs or is just election?
No, this is annexations, where properties annexes, notice of public hearing, annexation coming, yeah, that's what it is, not a political sign.
I don't want that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the point is with, here in Monmouth, anything over one acre is required to go to the voters, any annexation larger than one acre. Okay, so the next group of amendments were relating to right-of-way width. So this is something that Ryan Sparks had asked the council to look into, the council referred this to the planning commission, and they had extensive discussions on this with both myself and Russ Cooper. So I'm going to kind of give you an overview of what the proposed amendments are there. So again, what we're talking about is the right-of-way width, we aren't talking about the pavement width. We're talking about the amount of land that is set aside as public right-of-way. And one of the things you need to understand is that in our community, local streets, that is your basic quiet residential street, is, the right-of-way is sixty feet wide. And that extends beyond the back edge of the sidewalks and actually extends into front yards of properties. People often don't realize that, but they're mowing and maintaining right-of-way. And it's oftentimes in that grassy area where we put water lines in particular, and Russ can speak more to that in detail. So what we looked at was, how much flexibility do we feel comfortable with in providing in the width of the right-of-way for local streets? And what we felt was that for a standard local street with a sixty-foot right-of-way, that a minor variance procedure could be used to reduce the right-of-way width to, by no more than four feet, creating a fifty-six-foot wide right-of-way. Minor variances are an administrative action, the planning director handles those, although in this case, they would probably be, a minor variance would probably be bundled with a subdivision, and those would be referred to the planning commission to take a look about them. The main thing with a minor variance is, it's very prescriptive as, if you can look at those minor variance standards, even the ones we're not changing, it says you can get a variance up to this much. And all of them are prescriptive, it's not open-ended. So what we felt comfortable with was a fifty-six-foot right-of-way for a standard local street. Now I want to take you to the table that's on, two tables on pages eleven and twelve of your amendments, if you could take a look at those. And I wanted to explain what's going on here, there's a, this is kind of above and beyond all this, we wanted to clarify some things that weren't very clear in these two tables. The tables are the same, one, the one on page eleven is from the zoning ordinance, the one on page twelve is from the transportation plan, they're meant to be the same. Currently, we're required, under the transportation planning rule, to provide an alternative width, so in other words, a skinny street, we'll call it a skinny street. And currently, our skinny street is defined in two places. If you look back on page ten of your amendments, the very last item D. So it says, the public works director will permit development of a local street with a paved cross-section of twenty-eight feet, as, and we've added as a local street alternative design as shown in table seven dash two. So that defines the pavement width, and then if you look at the table on page, the table on both those pages, and you look at footnote five, it says for local streets, parking can be eliminated on one side to meet skinny street standards. So you basically piece those two things together, and there's our local street alternative. Well, we thought, why don't we put it in the table with all the other streets and use all the other numbers right across the board, so it just stands right out. We left the twenty-eight-foot standard in the, in the previous page, but we're taking out footnote number five and all references to footnote number five, and we're referencing it here as the local street alternative. Now, what we did there, what, one of the flaws that we had in our current set of standards was that, you notice as I described the skinny street, at no place does it talk about a right-of-way that's any smaller. Because we're reducing the width of the pavement to twenty-eight feet with sidewalks, we felt that having a sixty-foot right-of-way, the same as a regular standard local street, was probably excessive, so that what we're reducing there is reducing that to fifty-two feet. So let me, let me contrast the two, in a local street, regular local street, sixty-foot right-of-way, thirty-six feet of pavement within that. Sidewalks are extra, thirty-six feet of driving and parking space. In the skinny street, we're reducing the width of the street from thirty-eight, thirty-six to twenty-eight, by eight feet, reducing the right-of-way requirement from sixty to fifty-two feet. So when you look in those tables, that's where the fifty-two feet comes from, we're trying to match those up, so that in the standard local street, you're providing twenty-four additional feet of right-of-way beyond the street pavement, and in a local street alternative, you're doing the same. Twenty-eight feet in a fifty-two-foot right-of-way, there's twenty-four feet there for sidewalks, and then area beyond the curb for utilities. And so I hope that's clear, that we're basically, we're not adding in the local street alternative, we're just clarifying the standards and getting it into the table with everything else, so it doesn't sit there as a footnote.
Why does Ash Creek drive its own classification?
That, that came out of, that was part of the planning, I think, from the TSP, and I would have to, I'd have to revisit that, yeah.
We have lots more major streets than that.
Then, the next set of amendments now are to the sign code, typically a different animal here. And what the planning commission looked at were the sale signs, I think you've seen those, they look like a wind sail, they stick in the ground. And we, they looked at, you know, some, some various standards for those, at various sizes. So what the amendments would do would be to define a sale sign, and note that they aren't a wind sign or a device. And then on page fifteen of the amendments, here's, here's where the rubber meets the road, these are the standards for sale signs. So they're limited to office, commercial, and industrial zones on Highway ninety-nine W. You're allowed one for every fifty lineal feet of street frontage, up to a maximum of four sale signs. We kind of, to be honest with you, we kind of looked at what Hare and Point's already stuck in the ground, because they've been there a little while. Twelve by twenty-four was kind of a, looking at various standards, was a decent, you know, kind of an average size, and it seemed to be very typical of how other cities regulate these. Sale signs are not, they're to be on the property and not within the Highway ninety-nine W right-of-way, that's an ODOT requirement. And they're obviously not going to restrict parking, vision clearance, or the ability to use a sidewalk. And then, under prohibited signs, we accept out electronic reader boards for moving, rotating, other, as animated signs or parts thereof, just for clarification purposes. And we would prohibit, this is a new prohibition, inflatable advertising devices, the things you see, like from the lawn. So those will be prohibited under the proposed amendments.
If I blow up Santa on their commercial property, will this still be okay, because it's not advertising laws?
Spider, purple spider?
Yeah, blow up purple spider is okay, because it's not advertising.
It's just a spider. Behind that spider.
Turn back to sale signs real quick.
Yeah.
When I was on the planning commission, we talked about those being temporaries, so they're no longer temporary.
Well, yeah, and I'll be, yeah, and the idea was that if, people aren't probably going to ask me to put them in, so then I'm going to go get them, and I'm going to have to say, you need to do this, and it's temporary, and then I got to track you, and then I got to tell you to take them down. And I think, I was able to convince the, I'll be, I was able to convince the planning commission that maybe it would work better if we put some limitations on them, you know, size and number. And we let, then, we let the business community go ahead and, and work with it, instead of me having to track who was allowed, when and where, and, you know, because we, we had them originally in our, in our, the draft amendments was as a banner-type sign, you're allowed four per year, you need to come get a sign permit, the sign permit's good for thirty days. So in other words, every thirty days, I could be run over to Hare and Point saying, look, you need to do this. So in other words, every thirty days, I could be run over to Heron Point saying, look, you either need to take signs down or we need to do another permit. And you've done three permits this year, so you get one more permit for one more month and that's it. So it, it, it was probably for as much of any ease of administration.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but we didn't get rid of the banner requirements.
Right, banners are still temporary signs. We didn't, we didn't do anything with those, yeah.
We have some that are serving as very, very permanent signs.
Well, I know that, yeah.
Are you interested in enforcing that?
No, more than sale signs apparently, but because you're writing a law for new, you get to make that one accepted.
So that's, those are the amendments I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
It's like lots of good work.
Yeah, that poor planning. This is, that's, uh...
So you can see why I haven't been in, in the, because they've been busy.
Yeah.
I've been working hard.
So this is a public hearing. Are there any comments, Mr. Sparks? If you would be so kind as to state your, oh, I already did your name.
Brian.
And city for the record.
Uh, Brian Sparks, eight seventy South College Street here in Monmouth. We've been here before and talked with the council. Just laid out a little history here. Some of you folks are new, so I wanted to kind of bring you up to speed. We went in in March, April time period of 2013 and, uh, with a preliminary subdivision plan review with Mark, the planning director, and Russ, uh, public works director. In that process, Troy Plumb was my engineer, and I think he'll come up and offer a few comments here in a minute, determined that we had a unique feature to our property. It's a longer, narrow piece of property. And in order to build lots along the sides of the street, we needed to have a narrower right-of-way than was currently in the Transportation Systems Plan and the zoning ordinance. Mark denied our efforts to apply for a variance.
I'm sorry, could you tell me where your property's at enough?
Yeah, it's at the south end of College Street. If you were to drive off the south end of College Street, past where Wind Street turns off, it'd be on my driveway. And it's, it runs south from the houses along Wind Street all the way down to Ash Creek Drive. It actually goes beyond that, but that's the parcel that, that we're talking about. And it's roughly two-hundred-and-fifty feet wide in the north end, but in the south end, it shrinks down to, I think, about two-hundred-and-twenty feet. So to get house lots in there, there just isn't physically enough room. We didn't create the parcel. It was existing when we purchased it some twenty years ago. The concern that I had at that time, we came back to council to address it, was that typically, a variance is available. You have a constraint with a piece of property. I've been paying taxes on this ground for a long period of time. We had annexed it into the city, uh, back in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe. And we have a constraint. We wanted to approach the city. I hired a professional engineering firm to lay out a plan to address that, consistent with those types of issues confronting a piece of property that's ready for development. And after being, running into Mark's interpretation of the Monmouth zoning ordinance, that a variance wasn't allowed for a street right-of-way, we then went to council and y'all asked if we wouldn't take that to planning. We agreed to take that to planning in November of 2013. And in that process, uh, planning commission had a work session, but they didn't allow the input. They took a alternate street design proposal, which was intended to be an example of another way to plan a city street, putting utilities in different places, one of which was placing the water line and the roadway. And they chose not to ask, not to have a public session in that process, but to have a dialogue between Mark and Russ and the planning members. And we were quite shocked that we forwarded a proposal and weren't even allowed to comment on it in that planning session. So if you remember, I came back to you following that meeting in January of, of this year and said, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. We seem to have a little problem here. One, I have a property that's supposedly zoned for development, but I can't get a variance to address a right-of-way issue. And, uh, at the same time, I've since learned that there has been a variance granted for right-of-way issues as early as two thousand two, three, or four, over in the Ash Creek area, for three streets over there. And also brought to you the fact that the city is under expectations by the state ordinance to adopt neighborhood-friendly street design guidelines for both reduced right-of-way and reduced pavement width, as well as to minimize runoff in terms of how they're formulating the zoning ordinance. So with that information, gosh, it was like three weeks later when all of a sudden we're having a planning commission session and we're now willing to discuss the issue of right-of-way width. And I'm pleased that, in fact, a proposal was made. That action stalled and we went then to June, in which case the planning commission didn't have a quorum. And so we're now here September, October. Some considerable period of time down the road in, in the development cycle with this pro, with this property, trying to find a solution to what do we, how do we deal with this right-of-way issue? I, I'm still surprised that we're taking an approach that doesn't simply use the existing variance process that the city has. I don't know why Mark and/or Blaine believe that, that somehow the right-of-way provisions are sacrosanct in some fashion, that a right, a normal variance process shouldn't be used. They certainly seem to be comfortable with proposing the minor variance process that's in this proposal. But I believe the minor variance process that's in the proposal is in fact intended to prevent a general variance approach in the process. Give you an example. If a piece of property only needs a two-foot variance, with the approach that's taken here, there'd be a four-foot or nothing. Similarly, if they had fifty-four feet, but, and wanted to build a thirty-foot wide street, according to this table and the language that Mark has shared with the planning commission, they couldn't come in under a general variance request and request to build a thirty-foot street instead of a twenty-eight on a fifty-four-foot right-of-way. That wouldn't be permitted. It would have the same setbacks, but that number isn't in the charts and therefore wouldn't be allowed. So the proposal that's before you is attempting to come up with a one-size-fits-all prescription that limits the, the street and right-of-way options, when in fact, there, there may be better solutions available that would provide greater setbacks or wider streets than, than the twenty-eight-foot street itself. I don't know the reasoning and rationale behind all that, but it is, it's, it's been a laborious process. And I want to shift down. I've given you all a handout here and wanted to ask you to amend proposal fourteen dash oh one. The most important thing for me, from a process point of view, is that you retain the formal variance process and include the language that I provided you last January and have again provided you in this document, to simply state in the code that variances may be requested for right-of-way or street widths. It's straightforward. It hasn't come up very often. I think the only streets that we've had are, are one subdivision project out by Ash Creek School. But if it's necessary, I think having an engineering approach to it, instead of a fixed answer to the issue, is a lot better way to go than somehow locking it down with a singular fix that Mark has proposed in the, uh, minor variance process. The other thing that I want to get to here, and I talked about it in, in December or in January, and that is, there continues to be a bias against, in essence, implementing the skinny street standards and the code requirements that the state has for the city and the competency plans to adopt those. And I say that because we're continuing to apply a, a special alternative status as opposed to simply adopting a narrower local street standard. The street standard we have in here, if we look on turn, on table seven, two, is the same for the, the collector streets that are intended for more volume. We haven't reduced the standard street at all. We haven't built one of these streets, other than the variance that was put in out by Ash Creek School.
And Brian, I was on planning commission at that time. And that's an MX zone. It's not a variance. It's allowed in the zone. That's what I recall.
Out by Ash Creek School?
Yeah. That piece across the street from Ash Creek is on the MX. The other piece north of Ash Creek was also zoned MX. They asked for a zone change to single residential. We gave it to them. But the piece across from Ash Creek School, as I recall, is not single residential.
Yeah, I, I was led to believe that it was single family, but I, I don't, it, it may be.
Am I right?
It is an MX zone.
Yeah. So that's where that came from, just, just for our clarification purposes.
My, my, my point is that the streets that are there are functional. Save and except the fact that we still have them as one-way streets. I, I went ahead, Mark, in the, in the February hearing had provided some information from Dallas and Independence, so I went and spoke with those planners and looked at their regulations. And in both cases, they have adopted this quote skinny street standard as their local street. The Dallas standard local street is a fifty-foot right-of-way with a thirty-foot street and two five-foot sidewalks. That's their standard street. They reserve their old rule for the sixty-foot right-of-way and the thirty-six-foot street if, as part of the transportation plan, they're expecting more traffic to flow through that area while, when things extend later on. Makes sense? Independence, at the same time, has originally adopted a fifty-two-foot right-of-way and a twenty-eight-foot street with parking on one side, but has since amended that rule and now has the twenty-eight-foot street, fifty-two-foot right-of-way with parking on both sides. The reality is, is nobody in their right mind is gonna build another subdivision with parking on one side and it robs the citizens in that area and the town overall of an, an effective attempt at implementing the neighborhood-friendly street guidelines. If you don't have parking on both sides and you don't have the queuing, whether everyone likes that or not, you don't get the traffic calming effect. That's the intended purpose of the whole neighborhood-friendly street design approach. I don't necessarily like those, those streets, but that's what was intended, to try and stretch the land that we have so we get more houses out of it and try to reduce the runoff from impervious surfaces in the process. The approach that we've taken here is to keep the twenty-eight-foot street, keep the, the parking on one side, keep it as a unique provision as opposed to adopting it as a standard street, all of which I think are wrong. And to, why in two thousand seven, as part of the transportation plan, we increased the local street sidewalk from five feet to six feet, when the state statute was out there saying we should be reducing runoff, still makes no sense. I've brought those issues to the planning commission. They still don't like the skinny street idea and approach. Staff obviously continues to dislike them and feels there are problems with applying the, the minor variance to anything other than the sixty-foot right-of-way. And are attempting through the minor variance process to block any variance requests regarding right-of-way or street width or street design by simply saying, we have this approach and that's the only approach that you can have. So I've, I've got my notes there. I did go ahead and walk through the neighborhood out by Ash Creek School and talk to every person on the, the, I'll call it the neighborhood street versus the one where the townhouses are. And there are issues out there. People are frustrated with the speed of traffic, which is in part because we don't have parking on both sides. Others are just frustrated because there's not enough parking, cause you've got a three-bedroom house and five people live there and four of them have cars. And, and that's the traditional Monmouth neighborhood dilemma in terms of parking. But the biggest issue that we have out there is simply that we're not allowing parking on both sides. I've decided to, to solve my personal issue with this. I've bought another piece of property to, uh, should be effective in January. Hope to be coming back to you with an annexation request to annex another acre of property that will eliminate my narrow width constraint for streets in my subdivision project. So it'd be easy for me to just drop this issue and walk away. But it's been two years of trying to fight through and help Monmouth adopt in a sensible fashion the neighborhood-friendly street design guidelines that we have been arguing about literally since the late nineties. And that we have ignored in the process of the two thousand seven Transportation Systems Plan process. And it's time that we quit doing that and that we actually get into compliance with these regulations, follow the model and approach that Independence and Dallas have taken, and do this in a straight-up manner. Does it mean we have to build all local streets that way? I would hope that we would build bigger ones. But certainly the thirty and the fifty that Dallas has is their standard. To me, makes more sense than the twenty-eight and the fifty-two. We know we can work with the thirty and the fifty, but whatever we're gonna do, let's quit basically setting up a de facto that nobody's gonna build because we're restricting parking to, to one side of the street. I would ask that you, for a continuation tonight and that you all direct staff to go back and take another look at this. The planning commission didn't want to see it in, in either of the work session periods that were there. And like I said, at this point, I don't, I don't know that I'm gonna have a dog in the fight when we re-proposed our subdivision project. But I think it's wrong to basically set up a sham in terms of the rules and pretend that we're complying with the state requirements when the intent is to have a set of constraints such that no one's gonna build a skinny street in the, in the community. So with that, I would again ask that you not adopt the minor variance proposal that's there, even though it might be to my benefit later on, I might want to use it and return to the normal variance process. Thank you. I'm gonna ask Troy to come up and share with you a little bit of what his experience is in neighboring communities with these neighborhood-friendly street design guideline approaches.
You could do the name and city for the record.
Troy Plumb, address, Post Office, Fox three-seven-four, Carvallos, Oregon nine-seven-three-three-nine. So Brian did a great job of going over what we started discussing probably a couple of years ago. I'm very happy to see that, um, the right-of-way width had, had been reduced proportionate to the, the street width. So I, I do work, I've done projects in Monmouth, Independence, and all up and down the Midland Valley. Those would be more of a comparison to what, what I see. I, I know when these twenty-foot streets come in with parking on both sides, it's kind of like putting, putting around a dumbass in. People don't like it at first, but then they can become, become comfortable with it. I live in Carvallos and that, that has quite a bit of twenty-eight-foot wide streets. That's their local standard. When there, when you go to something like the thirty-six-foot wide street, it'd be called a neighborhood collector. Just a different way of, you know, defining streets. But what people worry about with parking on both sides is that, you know, passing each other. The traffic calming comes, it's a residential neighborhood. People typically say the twenty-eight-foot street would serve up something, up to forty lots, four hundred, averaging the trip, something. So it's not a large volume. Once it gets past that, then you would become a neighborhood collector. So if you think about it, you know, lots fifty to sixty feet wide, have a twenty-foot driveway, six-foot wings on both sides, so there's about thirty-two feet in front of each lot that you can't park a car. So about every thirty feet, you got a place to pull off and that's, that's how you gotta do it. That's what, that's what slows the traffic down. Two trucks just aren't going to pass each other. I live in a neighborhood on one of these, and it works. It works in Independence. What more often drives the final width of the street is the fire marshal. City of Independence and Monmouth are both Polk County Fire District number one. It sounds like that situation's been resolved with Independence going to parking on both sides. And again, I know of no developer who would go, would build a street with parking only allowed on one side. And when I've gone to planning commission hearings with the subdivision, choose the opposite. People say, "Hello, you can't have parking on one side of the street. Where they're going to park, they're going to park in our neighborhood." So, you know, it's a two. That would be the concern, if Brian had moved forward with 28 feet on one side, everybody to the, what, east of him would say, "Hey, they're just going to park in front of our houses." So I, whatever it is, it's got to, it's got to be parking on both sides. What it's really saying is, don't build a 28-foot wide street. So there's no point in even proposing it. And I hope that makes sense. It's just, you know, people fill their garages up. Not everybody, my parents don't, but I do. So you've got two parking spaces in your driveway. You've got a kid, once they get to high school, there's three. Now you're parking in the street. And most families have more than that. Briefly on sidewalks, I see the wider sidewalks in downtown cores, but, I mean, local streets, I've never seen one six feet wide. It's always five feet, so that's just my experience. Unusual. And then variances, I've never been told I couldn't have, make a variance request for any dimensional standard, except for the city of Monmouth and right-of-way widths. So that's unusual. I agree with Brian that a variance request can be made to any dimensional standard in the Monmouth zoning ordinance, and then it goes before the planning commission, possibly the city council, and you guys decide. To say you just can't do it, I mean, certainly, you've got to look at each property on its own merits and its own restrictions. So if you're looking at a 50-acre square piece of property, doesn't have any restrictions. But when Brian misquoted a little bit, his was 188 feet wide. There's, to put a regular street in there, I mean, you had lots that you could never sell. So, you know, there was a legitimate reason to request a variance, and that's the whole intent of them. So Brian had asked me here just to clarify that from my experience around Mid One Valley, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions for?
Can you describe more of this calming effect that comes from having parking on two sides as opposed to one side? Where's this coming from again?
Okay, so I'll do a different perspective first. So 36-foot wide street, if you had parking on both sides, say your parking takes up eight feet on both sides. Now, if I've got a 28, so, yeah, so now you've got 20 feet left. Now I've got a 28-foot wide street, and I let parking on one side, I've got 20 feet left. You're going to drive on that 28-foot wide street the same way you would drive on a 36-foot wide street with parking on both sides. So now, I'm in a car driving, and I've got parking on both sides and a 28-foot wide street. So now we're skinny. While most cars, passenger cars, 60 wide, they could physically get by, it just feels extremely uncomfortable. Someone's got to pull over at a driveway. This would not work in a commercial, where there's not commercials area or apartments. Carvallos unfortunately built one on a street with apartments, there's no driveways, there's no place to pull over. It's awful. There has to be, there has to be slots 50 to 60 feet wide with these driveways, so, you know, you're seeing someone coming 100 feet in front of you, you're going to pull over. Someone's going to. It's not, you know, maybe once a week, someone doesn't. Well, then some, if you want to get by each other, then someone's got to back out. But for the most part, you just, you just see it coming, now you're going five miles an hour. Sure, you're going five miles an hour down a local residential street. That's the traffic calming. And it really does work.
I suppose my perspective is a little bit different because what you described-
This is our bicycle guy.
No, it's not, no, it's not just that. It's the New York guy. Because what you describe is pretty common in the places that I've lived in New York and Massachusetts, and there's a reason why I don't live there anymore. And so I'm curious of, I get what you're saying. I think that the problem is that after people get used to it, they drive just as fast as they would otherwise. And so I'm not discounting your perspective, and I'm not discounting the fact that maybe it would play out differently here in Oregon, but that was my day-to-day for quite a bit of time. And people would squeeze through just as much as they could squeeze through, and every once in a while, you'd get a little skid mark on the side of your car. It's just fortunate that we're standing next to it.
So, this 28-foot, and I, maybe, Mark, you could correct me if I'm wrong, it's some sort of match, I mean, 40 dwelling units, 480T, I mean, it's not, you couldn't build a mile of this.
Right. It's based on the fact that there'll be less than 400 car trips, average daily trips on the street. And as you saw from the SDC analysis, single-family home, I think John had nine and a half trips, typically 10 trips per home.
So that's a little different.
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be 40 homes at most. Then once you get past that, now you're going without any other thing in between 28 and 36, you're going to 36.
And if you're on a TSP, I assume, and it says, "This street's eventually going to be connected to some other stuff," even though it's only got 40 units on it, you're going to say, "This can't be a skinny street because..."
Yeah, yeah. If you look at the one spot in town where we have those streets, it's right here. It's in this little subdivision. It's constrained. There is no land that's going to funnel more traffic into that. And that's, there's that example.
And I will point out that that area has particular problems whenever there's an event at Ash Creek School, because it's already parked up, and everybody wants to go in and find more parking because the lots at school are severely insufficient.
We'll also point out that this is where we just had to complain about people parking on the-
No, I know, absolutely. Absolutely.
And just one more thing to add, I'm working on a project that I worked on several years ago, the Alvin Edition. Mark, are you familiar with it? And its zone is MX, and at that time, the minimum street width was 36 feet. I don't believe there's a different street standard for the MX zone, to reduce it to 30 feet.
I think there were variances granted for that subdivision that were part of the code then, that aren't part of the code now. And that's where that came from.
And this subdivision has parking on both sides of the street?
One side of the street.
One side of the street. All right, thank you.
So Mark, is there any particular reason to stop relying for no general variance request capacity for street width, where somebody had a unique situation that they couldn't ask for a solution to that, that isn't either A or B, that is in fact A and a half?
Well, part of it has to do with the ability of the city and its practice to put water lines outside of the pavement, separating them from sewer lines, which is required by law, but also providing for maintenance of those without having to tear up the street. You have to tear up a water line, you're digging the lawn instead of the street. That's a big part of that, and- Anything else you want to add?
But to answer your question, it's a policy decision.
Right, exactly.
It's purely a policy.
I do take the point that I can vary just about anything else in code, and this one thing seems to be locked in.
Yeah, and it's been over a year since I looked at this language. My recollection was, and again, we're interpreting Monmouth code, not a city's code, that there were constraints on the variance. I mean, I agree with Mark in that interpretation. If you wanted to enlarge the opportunity for variance that you'd seize on, similar to what Brian has suggested, and you just make that explicit in the code, and then that problem is solved going forward.
And one perspective, too, is that one thing we're dealing with is a pretty flat town.
No, I understand.
So if you end up with hilly places and going down into bogs, you get a lot more of those situations. Pretty much for our part, we've been able to just lay the town out in the-
Yeah, we have. We've been lucky, though, and I feel like occasionally we're going to run into something like Brian, and it might be nice to have more of an open window than A or B, and being able to work something else. That's just me. Mark, do I remember, we had a conversation a long ago about skinny streets, and that there's a little bit of fear about, DLCD was pushing for a safe harbor, was going to be skinny, and you had to have special excuses to have not skinny? And is there anything around that with skinny street standards that we're afraid that if we adopted as a standard, it's going to become the automatic standard?
The 28-foot standard is what DLCD is comfortable with. There was a lot of, back in the day, there was a lot of back and forth about what exactly constituted a skinny street. But we adopted those standards in 2009, when we updated the transportation plan. DLCD and ODOT were part of the table, they were part of the technical review team. So I want to clarify again, we're not, we are in compliance with-
No, I got you. I understand that.
Well, it keeps being asserted that we're not.
No.
Numerous hearings.
No, I understand that we are in fact in compliance by having a second standard. I'm just wondering if there's any flexibility in that. And then finally, the six-foot sidewalk thing, I do find it a curiosity, because everything in my neighborhood's fine. I've built sidewalks in my neighborhood at five.
The six-foot standard came in in 2009, and there was no, there's been no discussion of amending it or changing it or unhappiness with it.
Any particular reason for it? Especially given stormwater handling issues and so on?
Well, I think the other thing you have to deal with is pedestrian, pedestrian issues. So I think that's probably part of that as well. And I would say, Independence, they have six-foot sidewalks there. Just to clarify what the Independence standards are, their standard local street, well, they have a local street standard of a 52-foot right-of-way and 28-foot travel lanes. The 28-foot travel lane and the 52-foot right-of-way, that's exactly what we have. And their code says, "But if you're zoned high-density residential, commercial, industrial, or you'll generate more than 400 trips," there's that number again, "then you have to develop a 36-foot wide street in a 60-foot right-of-way." Exactly what we have. They have the same standards we have, they just have it written a little bit, written backwards. It says, "Here's the street, but if you're going to have more than 400 trips, oop, the street got bigger." Well, we say, "Here's the big street, and if you're going to have less than 400 streets, you can build smaller." So, same standard.
And do they allow parking on both sides of the 28?
Uh, yes.
Anyone-
Just double check them.
Right. And in Dallas, their standard street, they've made a policy choice of a 50-foot right-of-way as opposed to 60, with 30 feet wide travel lanes, two five-foot sidewalks, and parking allowed on both sides. Then they have a skinny street, 40-foot right-of-way, 20-foot travel lanes, one sidewalk, and no on-street parking. That's Dallas standard.
It's only in the books at this point. There's any development that-
Right. But that's part of complying with the TPR, is that we provide this option. And the qualification that we're allowed to put on it is the 400-trip range. In some of, I think some of the earlier iterations in other cities where I worked, it was kind of like, "You can build a skinny street if we like it." And it was very vague. I mean, it was, to the point where we were told that you've got to have some kind of demonstrable target standard that is applicable to that. Isn't just, you're putting it on the books, but, you know, wink, wink, we're never going to allow it if you don't like it.
So how is two-sided parking working for Independence and Dallas at 28 and 30 for under 400 trips? Do they have any issues with that? Are we a wary line, dear? Do you have anything on that?
I'm not even, I can't even think of a 28-foot wide street in Dallas. Yeah.
Just curious. And I have other questions, I'm sorry, you guys. This gets into stuff I've always been interested in, so.
They're all over it. Well, there's a lot of information here. I was going along well till we got to this one, and then the detail, this deal here has got me a little stumped. If I don't have any questions, tell them, I just, I need to have time to-
Is he asked, Brian?
Yes. Can I make a suggestion? If we look at, because it's only one out of a list of quite a few proposed amendments, and that this new language isn't necessarily going to change the proposed amendments for this transportation piece, my recommendation would be to make a motion on this, come back and talk about the more detailed piece or the variance policy at a different time than tonight.
This is already turned down.
Yeah, you're saying, you mean approve what?
Approve what's here, because the variance issue that Brian has presented isn't going to change the current language. It's only going to add to the language.
Well, I just want to think a second. If you approve this, do we have a new, do we have a new land use process? I mean, do we have a new legislative process?
Right.
Yeah, if you adopt this, you just adopted what the planning commission amended-
Then we'll have to go back to planning, where this region modified it without going back to planning.
Yeah. I think you, if you wanted to hold this in abeyance, and, you know, and then look at this and see if you wanted to incorporate that, maybe incorporate amendment to this, but I think once you adopt it, you've closed the book on legislative amendment 1401.
Okay.
Or, or the 14, whatever it is.
Oh, 1401.
Yeah, it's 1401, okay, yeah.
So I hear Lane suggesting, and maybe Steve, I'm working with you and John, if you'd like to hold off on this and come back to it next time or sometime soon, and get a chance to read Brian's stuff, and think a little bit, and bounce some questions off staff perhaps. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the, I mean, we could do that. We could probably approve-
Should I close the hearing, Brian?
Oh, yeah, I think you probably should.
Sorry, go ahead.
John, I did ask for a continuation of the-
Well, it's not, this isn't a quasi-adjudicial, this is a legislative hearing, so.
Okay.
No, no, I'm saying, I did ask for a continuation.
Oh, I see a process, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
During my testimony. It was, I did that because it was late, and I thought there was more here to digest than the time was going to allow before anybody-
So is everybody okay with that, to take this and do some homework and come back to it at a future date?
And primary focus will be the-
90 dot 412, 90 dot 413, and 96 dot 410 appear to mean to be the affected section-
Street width and variances, right?
The minor variances and transportation improvements. So the bottom half of page eight, nine, and 10 appear to be the ones I'd like to, I, that was way, even Mark's was, you know, a lot of information. For me, having never been on planning, I would-
Those of us who have been through have that experience.
Right.
See, say again, it was 90 412?
Yeah, 90 412 and 90 413, and then 96 dot 410.
410, okay. Concentrate on those.
Last half of page eight down to 10 for me. I heard one, the rest of them, I was going fine.
Working on these, next key?
Whatever the agenda, I don't know.
How's the regular reading agenda looking next time?
Of course, it is election.
That's the-
It is.
Oh, in the narrative. That's just the street.
Well, let's just-
Oh, I got it, I got it.
Take the whole thing and work over it. See if there's anything else you have puzzlements to know. There's sign code stuff in there. Sign code's always good, isn't it, Mark? Okay, so we'll come back to this hopefully next time work session. Now, we are at 10:15, and council rules suggest that we're done at 10:00 unless we agree to keep going. I have a feeling that the fire station issue may take a while, so I propose moving that to next time as well. I would like to take just a minute to do a council comments piece to give you a quick update on the WIPEG thing, which is, well, this will be really quick, I want to see. Scott, did you bring copies of that?
Oh, I copied them. They're in my office.
Oh, okay. We'll get it out electronically. The bottom line is that WIPEG can't buy a new server, and Monmouth is going to have to buy a new server, WIPEG will continue to pay for it as planned, assuming the council approves all that. Lane sat down and took the original MOU that he wrote for the arrangement between the city and-
Independence and the university.
Well, he started out with, he had an original MOU that was between the city and the university about the university's donation of money to help pay for the server.
And housing the server, yeah.
Yeah, he took that and added onto it and turned it into a three-way for the three entities that make up WIPEG, to explain how all this is going to shake out. And so I have that MOU out to the WIPEG board, I have it out to the decline, I have it to the lender. And so you guys will get it electronically as soon as possible. And if you all could give that a read, so if there is in fact room on the agenda next time, perhaps we could, because it comes down to approving the city and entering into a loan agreement to buy this thing. It's about $52,000 I'll hold. WIPEG has a little over $10,000 in the bank, plus the university's $15,000, we cover half of it right there. We're realizing over $1,800 a month in PEG fees, and the payments are under $1,000. So it feels real good, and we find, who was it? Not Netflix, oh, HBO and CBS both decided that they were going to start offering online all-computer services, which brings us back to that full circle of- to that full circle of, you know, what is the long-term thing gonna be for cable TV? That's why this server also will serve to the internet through my net, so we're prepared for that future. Anyway, there you go, that's where that is. Any other business from anybody before we, I'm assuming everybody's okay with going home?
An update on the cycle thing, the letter that I circulated last time went to Oregon Parks and Rec. They basically responded before I submitted it, saying that we would be better off rather than modifying the existing Willamette Scenic Valley Bike Way to propose a new Scenic Valley Bike Way, and early next year is the deadline on that. So I'm moving forward with that, I've met with Sean Irvine and David Klein from Independence. The difficulty we'll run into is what the criteria for a scenic valley bike way is now is different than what it was when it was originally proposed. And so a lot more like rolling hills, farmland, and a lot less of the urban environment. Quite frankly, they don't wanna take people through a lot of towns, which probably runs contrary to what we're hoping to accomplish economically.
But gotta come find a place to buy a beer and murder someone.
Right, so what I talked to the folks from Independence about, and I'll be happy to fill anyone in more on this conversation if they're interested here in Monmouth, is that we could be publicizing and marketing our own cycling adventures as offshoots to a proposed more scenic, officially recognized by Parks and Rec, and so I think that's the direction we're gonna head. Pick a route that we're certain has a good chance of getting through Oregon Parks and Rec and being declared a scenic bike way, and then doing independent marketing between the cities and Travel Oregon, of getting people in the town.
And the interesting piece is gonna be working with the commission, who's on that commission. We're in the middle of a Travel Oregon rural tourism studio, which has two main focuses, one being agri-tourism and the other one being cycle tourism. And so I'm participating in that exercise each month for the next few months.
And I know that it's been contentious in the past, and I'm hoping that moving forward, we can move forward with an air of positivity, optimism, understanding it's in everybody's best interest, urbanites and ruralites alike, to make this happen.
Four hundred million dollars, I said, tourist...
I just think that's interesting that they say, rather than just change existing route, they think you should do a new one, like that doesn't seem like what typically people...
It builds out their infrastructure, keeps them from alienating anyone along the current route. It's, there's a lot of rationale behind it, but it is more work for them.
It could be a fork in the Willamette Valley City Cycle Way too, that lives around and connects back to...
I move, we adjourn.
In favor?
I... You might as well, bike lane.